He's not good at checking emails.
Hi, guys. If you have a few minutes after, can I talk to you? 4:30.
Did I jump the gun there?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I just know that the hunt's on later. I wanted to get the meeting going.
Frank Scott.
Here.
Mark Serbrot.
Present.
Ron Vaughn.
Brad Newrecker.
Danny Davis.
Here. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Item D, unless Randy is on the phone, probably would have to be pushed back to the next meeting.
Okay. Anything? Did you want to add anything else to this information?
No.
It's all on here?
Yeah.
Okay. No other additions or corrections?
Meeting in February 3rd.
Right.
For Randy. Item two, public comment. This is related to agenda items only. State your name for the record. Speak only to the chairperson. Stand behind the podium when speaking. Limit comments to three minutes or fewer and follow the direction of the chairperson when speaking. Is there any public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Item three, appointments. Mr. Harrison, executive director of therapy services related to the amendment to the Michigan Auto Insurance Reform Act. Hi, Mr. Harrison.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for letting me join virtually today. My apologies for not being in, in building with y'all. Sorry?
You got the floor.
I appreciate it. Well, thank you so much again. I just wanted to speak to something we brought up again in public comment. I believe at the last commit, Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, our hope is that the, the board would consider a resolution to urge the state to amend, at least again, the home health piece of the 2019 Auto Insurance Reform Act. We're continuing to see, again, reimbursements, as I mentioned in the last meeting, coming in at as low as 16 or 14 to $16 per hour because our bill rates of 30 have been cut by 45% due to the law that was passed in 2019. Now, we do believe this 45% reduction was meant and intended actually for hospital systems and others. Yet, home health care has now been wrapped into that, which is, as I mentioned previously, is putting our patients and families we serve at risk. As, as many of you know, we are unable to provide staffing and resources. This reimbursement rate is the cost of even hiring and training someone is, is well exceeding the reimbursement and is actually now closer probably $21, $22 an hour. Again, Representative Phil Green is drafting a solution for this issue as it relates to home health. He was planning on dropping the bill this week, although the House and Senate, I don't believe, maybe the Senate did, but the House did not have session due to the COVID-19 pandemic. But we do believe Rep. Green is, is going to be introducing this bill next week. I think I had shared electronically some of the documents with the board or with the clerk for board review and certainly would love any, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but any, any comment or questions about, again, a proposed resolution. I know it is a little bit unorthodox for county commissioner board to adopt something similar to this, but we do believe, given the magnitude of this affecting participants and stakeholders all across the state, it is, it is certainly important in that, again, your voice as a board would make a difference in, in attracting the state to do something. If, I guess, is there any questions or thoughts from, from a resolution standpoint or just? What, what can I help answer from the board that may be a potential sticking point or again, questions from when, when we introduced things last week to now?
Mr. Serbrot?
I don't have anything. I think I'd be in favor of passing a resolution.
Mr. Scott?
I don't have any question.
Mr. Vaughn?
I'm good.
Mr. Serbrot? I don't think there's any, I guess I don't think there's any questions. I, I read, I think you had two resolutions in here. It looked like they pretty much copied one another. Ascot was one and what was the other one? Yeah.
Yeah, Oakland County. Yeah.
Um, I guess, is there a reason to? All this is a resolution is basically supporting. Right, right, right. It's not really necessarily taking a stance either way. It, it's just a very touchy
It is. No, it is. You're exactly right. Chairman, it is a very, a very delicate thing. And again, like I said, we don't, it's not our intention to undo the, the lift that the state took in 2019 to, to now provide drivers with choices. Again, we just believe and I think most of us can agree if, if those now that select that unlimited medical or even a portion of their auto insurance policy where that personal injury protection is, is a piece of it, they should be entitled to, you know, care and service should they then, then need that. And again, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I just think what, what got us here was that basically there was no cap previously, correct?
Correct. It was, yeah, there was, there was a ton of, a ton of people that, that drove quite a few, quite a few Mack trucks through some, some legal loopholes to, to push that boundary. And so one of the things, I'm glad you mentioned that actually, one of the things that we are advocating stay in the 2019 act is the process of utilization review, which does set parameters similar to Medicare, Blue Cross Blue Shield and others that will continue to rein in providers, not ourselves, but other providers or families or, or therapy clinics that were overusing and, and overcharging for care and service. So that, that is a piece that is, I did not mention previously, and I'm glad you mentioned it from a cap perspective, but that utilization review is still very much an important piece of the legislation that, that is, is a, is a great thing, quite frankly, because it does truly look at what do patients need versus what are families and attorneys hoping they can obtain to some degree, right? And, and our camp is very much in the focusing on what families need to be safe and in their homes and and certainly live their lives to the fullest, but also within the confines of what's reasonable. And now utilization review has a standardized process of identifying that because insurance companies have to have utilization review departments as an effect of the law and in which, in fact, they do, as we've started to see that as well, just from some of the therapy that we've done. Not, I won't say it's, it's, it's certainly not excessive, but somebody like with a severe spinal cord injury or brain injury continuing to keep them safe even with, you know, their, their swallow strategies. For instance, we have several gentlemen with brain injuries who need continued reinforcement from their speech therapist along with training of caregivers as they continue to move along. That keeps them safe while even eating a meal and, and those strategies for avoiding aspiration. But so a long-winded answer to your question, that unlimited, that, that no cap on, on what people can charge was, and it was part of the problem. But again, now utilization review really puts that, I don't want to say puts that to rest because certainly bad actors will continue to find ways to try to be bad actors. But it does provide, it should provide some reassurance that folks won't be able to charge whatever they, whatever they wanted to. And, and we're advocating even the green bill, which again, we're not recommending the board take a position on that necessarily, just encouraging the state to address this before it gets any worse. But even the green bill puts a ceiling on home health charges that, that is reasonable as it relates to the VA fee schedule nationwide.
It just does seem like there should be some type of, of happy medium here. If, if I'm not mistaken, Michigan does have the highest auto insurance i- in, in the country, correct?
Yeah, it's either number one or number two. And, and even after the reforms, which is, as a driver myself, is frustrating. And what's interesting with even those insurance rates, if we were to compare policy to policy, right, even from a, you know, an Indiana driver to a Michigan driver, the only thing we should be talking about here in terms of the policy coverages is the medical and that MCCA fee, which interestingly enough, only makes up about 15% of a driver's policy. The rest of between comprehension, collision, liability, personal property, that type of stuff makes up the other 75%. And even those rates of that parts of the policy are dramatically higher across the board. And so, a- again, we can't speak to how insurance companies come up with their, their policies and rates. But again, we, we do hope that over time, drivers will continue to see relief in that sense. And we do believe with other insurance companies coming into Michigan, Cure being one that's, that's made some headlines. I don't know if you guys have heard of Cure Insurance, U R E. But their, their policies have been rated significantly less expensive while also offering that unlimited coverage. Now, again, should a driver choose that unlimited coverage, they should be entitled, we believe, entitled to benefiting from it from a care perspective, not necessarily how much money is spent, but getting access to care in the home should they need that to stay at home after an accident. And, and again, there, those, those policies have lower rates for collision and comprehension and all that stuff while being competitive with the personal injury piece of, of the policy. So there's definitely some work that the insurance companies have to do to continue to lower those rates. But again, what we're talking about should only be that MCCA fee and the personal injury protection of those policies.
So we're not taking a stance on this. By passing a resolution, we're just requesting that this be reevaluated, correct?
At, yeah, absolutely. As it relates to home health care and the reimbursements that
Yes and no. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and I missed the question. What, I'm sorry.
I asked the chairperson if that, that's a stance. If we're going to advocate anything, it's a stance. Advocate a look at the change. I just, I'm wondering, how does this affect the county? Now, the county does have automobile liability insurance. So it affects it at, at that point. I guess the other side of it. I'm hearing one side. Should I be hearing the other side so I can make a balanced decision?
Well, with this, this will probably decrease. The anticipation is this will decrease the rates of the auto.
One side says it'll decrease it. What's the other side say?
The other side is this gentleman saying, hold on, let's.
No, we're not hearing from the insurance side. We're only hearing from the guy that wants to change the insurance side.
He's requesting that we pass a resolution.
I get it. I get that.
Not that we're passing a motion to make any
Well, we can't make a change.
Changes.
You can't change state legislature.
No, we can't.
Nor are we endorsing a specific change at this point. There is, hasn't even been a bill introduced at this point. So we're not coming out pro or con against any proposed legislation at this point.
And the resolution literally states you'd be requesting the state legislature to amend the No-Fault Auto Insurance Reform Act to address a sustainable reimbursement cap based on an existing government payer for residential care services. So it's very generic that way. You're saying, please amend it to address this. You're not saying
What changes to make?
Pick that bill or what?
So Mr. Harrison, why did you come to us? Why did you come to this county board?
Yeah, so great question. So we have been, and thank you guys for, for the candid conversation and, and questions. You know, I really appreciate that as well. So we, we've made a push, you know, we've been working with the state legislature since about last February. So it's been about almost a year now. And one of the things that, that we keep hearing from the state and even other lobbyists that work in Lansing full-time, because this is not my full-time job, right? I, I I have not, I'm not a, a political dynamo or, or even really know what I'm doing half the time in this sense, but we continue to hear that there's an importance to get an awareness to, to local communities that, that they may not have. And so whether, again, whether or not the board, you as a board decide to pass a resolution, I mean, I hope you do, but at the same time, I'm also thankful for the time and opportunity to discuss thoughtfully because part of our hope is that there's an awareness and just what, what is going on to those families out there that are reliant on home health after these accidents? And, and again, it believes, it was believed to be unintended by the legislature through our conversations with the legislature. I mean, many of us that were there and then of them that were there in 19, 2019 told us that they were encouraged to sign and, and agree to pass with the understanding that there would be some things that needed to get worked out as time went on. I, I unfortunately don't believe that they thought something this dire would happen as quickly as it has. But, but here we are. And so to answer your question, I, I'm doing as best I can for, for the counties that we care for patients and have had cared for patients in the past to, to reach out to many county boards in this light and, and encourage and just draw awareness to this, to this topic. And so certainly, again, and then working with Mr. Ferens, who was at the previous meeting, who couldn't be with us today. You know, he's, he's been on several calls with the Home Health and Hospice Association, again, being a very local provider in your area and in the West Branch community. And so wanting to come alongside him and support him, yet also support the clients that we've cared for in the past throughout the county is, is why we wanted to come and, and speak with you. And so again, it's not, it's not that your county, I want to say, is the, certainly not the only one we're talking with. I, I've done several meetings this week and will continue to do so in order to get, again, some awareness of what's happening. But, but truly has been the hope of, of additional outreach and understanding of, of the current situation.
As, as they spoke, I'm not sure if it was you or the other gentleman at the meeting there, it has affected some of the home care agencies locally. Would you guys like to go forward with this resolution? Would you like to talk to our auto carrier prior? You guys tell me.
I'm in favor.
Commissioner Scott?
I'm not going to vote for it. I don't have enough information to vote on.
So would you?
I can't not vote for it, but because I don't know enough, I'm going to vote no.
So would you like our insurance carrier to come in or I'm asking?
I don't even think this is within our realm, other than if the insurance company tell me that this does affect, does affect the cost to, to the county, then, then it would matter to me.
So we can probably send an email out and question? Suggestions?
That'd be good.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I don't think that we should be a vehicle for every small concern out there, you know? I mean, he's only addressing, as he says, 15% of the bill. You know, I, I don't want the other 85% coming in individually wanting changes too. And geez, we'll take up all our time.
I, I see.
With this special interest stuff.
I see both sides of the spectrum, you know?
Good. Well, you're in the healthcare.
Correct. So that, that is very unfortunate what this bill has done. But, but hopefully going forward, there's at least a happy medium. But let's get that answered. We'll welcome there. Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Of course. Thank you, guys. Let me know if, if and when that next meeting on an appointment will be scheduled, then I'm happy to join again, either in person or virtually.
Is there a timeframe that you would like this resolution by?
You know, I, you know, ideally the sooner the better, but at the same time, again, should the board decide even not to pass, I, I hope my conversations have stirred additional questions at least and, and continue to engage in conversation. Certainly, certainly it is, again, like I mentioned, not a, not a traditional county conversation from a board perspective to be had. Although it, it does seem to affect all of us, right? Because all of us are still purchasing auto insurance policies for vehicles that we and our families drive and, and use. And again, with, with that unlimited coverage being something that we can purchase, I, I want to be forthright in saying that we as providers have, have stopped accepting patients even now with auto accident injuries because of the reimbursement challenges that we're facing. And so but, but I totally see both sides. And so again, would, would love something, you know, as soon as possible, but, but understand that, again, it's not a traditional county, county measure.
Thank you. Can you put this on the next committee of the whole? Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Item 3C, Rick.
Yes, so my office, we handle all the concealed pistol licenses that come through the county. We, our revenue for the year is about $10,000 on those. There's confidential information on those, on the applications. We are requesting the purchase of desks to have locking cabinets on them so that we can keep all that confidential information locked up because it really should be. All of us in the office deal with the CPOs. And we currently, well, when, when we talked about the budgets a couple of months ago, our fund balance was 62,000. And Tim had mentioned that we should bring that down a little bit. So I'm requesting that we get new desks for the office coming out of the CPL fund to basically have everything more secure. The election documentation, the finances stuff, the court documentation there in April, they're starting. Personal protected information is all supposed to be kept confidential. So we would like to get new desks so that we can keep it all locked up. So we got two boats, both local. The central was the lesser of the two. They will come in and set them all up, do everything for us. So I'm just asking now so that we can get it all in place before all this April, personal protected information stuff goes into effect because there's such a lead time on the desk. There's like, things they said, eight to 10 weeks before we can even get them. So that's why I'm coming to you now. So I'm asking to get that approved.
So it'd be fun to be coming from the CPL fund.
Yeah. And then after this, there'll still be 30, well, we, we transfer 10,000 out of that to the general fund. There'll still be 34,000 left in there in the fund balance after this. Questions? Commissioner Scott?
This replaces all the desks in your office?
Yes, sir.
And we're, we're not secure now. I mean, the lock on the door isn't enough. Security in the hallway.
I can tell you and
It's a lot of money.
I don't feel secure right now. I'll just say that.
Okay.
Can we go a different route? I mean, could we just purchase cabinets instead of replacing the entire desks?
The locking cabinets?
I'm talking about good ones, not cheap ones.
That is an option.
When Brenda was here, we put a lock on a four-door in there because she wanted to lock up the permission stuff.
The quality and the age of everything, do you know how all this, this stuff that, I mean, my desk.
23 years this year before me.
Spent the same, same desk, but there's as long as I can remember.
And to add new cabinets to your four space is questionable because you're so limited in the space.
Yeah. And we're trying to get, I mean, you walk in, you walk, you walk by the office and you see all the cords all showing. It just.
Where would the cords go?
They will be hidden.
Hidden.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Just got new carpet. Should have threw them underneath. Just a whole lot of money.
I don't have a problem with it because of whole confidentiality thing. I, I, I understand that. I respect that. I think that that's reassuring. I think I agree with you. People drop off a lot of confidential information that I'm, I'm sure that they don't want out there by what other, whatever way.
Right. And we get, we get a lot of people come through our office that potentially could be sitting out on the desk, waiting to get put in the back to get locked up at night. Whereas this, we have the locking file cabinets, whatever. They can go on the file cabinets shut. Nobody can see it.
You got the money.
And we got the money. And we would still have more than half of the money.
Good. Tim, what, what can this money pay for? Or what does it have to pay for? Or?
It's somewhat loosely defined. Just anything that's related to CPL will qualify? So this would qualify?
Every one of us.
Can't be spent for anything else?
I would argue yes. I know I could get some arguments that would counter that, but it's, it's somewhat loose. Anything really that is going on in the clerk's office can at least be loosely connected to CPL, anything.
Okay, so it has to stay in the clerk's office?
Right. I mean, you're not going to use that money to, you know, buy a, a vehicle for zoning. That won't work.
So with the sheriff, you'd like to have.
So, well, sure, we'd all like to have a vehicle.
I don't mean him personally, but his office. If it were in any way connected to the clerk's office, I think I could make the argument that says it qualifies. But, but the money has to stay within the clerk's office. That's the, yes, that's the question. Okay, well, if it has to stay there. If it has to stay there, then yeah, you got to spend it there then. What are you going to do? Just that turn, have it pile up in the corner? You know? I, I don't know. You know, that's what I'm saying. You know, that's what happens with all these dedicated funds. Right? You know, it, you know, what suffers is the general one ends up suffering. You know? So that's a, that's a budgetary thing for the next year, right?
It's always, I mean, it's always going to be on your budget approval calendar. It's part of the
Right.
Full county budget, right? What you said, I mean, I don't want to.
Well, when, when somebody asks me why we're spending $16,000.
Fun point that you make, that's, that's very clear to me. Every time one of those new statutes is passed, it says, counties, you shall do this, immediately comes to mind is Headley, which means, okay, state will be glad to do it, but you need to provide the funding for this. In this case, the CPL. When the CPL has went to our clerk's office, this was the mechanism the state used to say, we're now in compliance with Headley. And so that's literally why, you know, that we focus straight on the clerk's office in this case.
Okay, all right.
Commissioner Serbrot, did you have anything?
I just know all those desks are, and this is, I think, a very needed upgrade.
Yes.
The funds are there. They're basically semi-restricted. So I'd be in favor of.
Commissioner Serbrot?
You're old with the desk.
Maybe.
Maybe not the one I had.
Not that ashamed to me, but I, I sure would like to use that money for other things in the clerk's office besides just desks.
Like what? That has to do with the CPL? What would you suggest that has to do with the CPL?
Well, isn't that, isn't that big storage unit going to need additional storage?
What storage unit?
That, that big thing that moves around it.
Electraer?
Yeah. You're going to need another one else pretty soon, aren't you? You're gonna need another one else pretty soon, aren't you? I thought we were like maxed out on storage.
Well, yeah, but we still have.
How much one of them things cost?
Where are you gonna put it?
We're gonna add on, I don't know. We got a lobby we don't much use anymore.
I got plans for that. You'll like those plans, you will.
Okay.
If, I mean, there's right when we, as of the end of the year, there was sixty two thousand dollars in there. If if you have any other ideas on what it can be used on, I'm open to suggestions, but we need something that, we need locking desks, we need updated.
Okay, all right. You you make a good presentation.
And I know we're one of the best desks that you have in your office could go if you get new desks. Be right directly across from Tim's office because that desk that is in there is as old as I am, it's chipped up, it's nasty looking.
Commissioner, did you have anything?
I, like you say, I I was just floored at the the price of the desk. Um, if the sixty two thousand dollars is sitting there, has to be used in there. Um, and they're as old as he says, and now with the new rules, regulations or whatever, that they have to be locked.
It's for four, it's a total of four desks, correct? Am I reading that right?
Oh, no, it's.
Four stations, okay, just let's make sure, oh, four stations and then yours and, okay, so. Six desks are all being called stations for sixteen thousand one hundred and twenty four dollars.
And that's, I believe, everything in Tracy's office that houses human resources, every, everybody's personal information, those will all be locked. My stuff will have locks. And then the four desks.
What about the the counter when you walk in, are you replacing that too? Is that a storied unit in itself? I never looked behind it, is that, is that the seventy two by thirty?
Yeah, those are.
Laminate top?
Those.
Surface?
That's our makeshift lectrever. Those are, we store more court files in there, yes.
Okay, we'll put that on for resolution. Did you have anything you wanted to add to that, Tim? Did you have any? I don't see, Mr. Veder, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, isn't it?
It is.
Three things for you today. Real quickly, um, I'll see in your packet, there is the the twenty twenty one annual report from the. From the planning commission and zoning board of appeals. I'm required to provide this under the Michigan Michigan Planning Enabling Act of two thousand eight. Just basically a synopsis of the activities for the twenty twenty one calendar year. Didn't know if anyone had any questions or any concerns or anything that popped up on that. Pretty much breaks down all the permits, who's responsible for what. What the planning commissions, zoning board of appeals does. Pretty straightforward as far as as the report.
So Ryan, how would you like the board to receive this? Because it's a statutory requirement, I think it needs to make the minutes somewhere. So would you need a resolution? Would you feel like it's okay to accept this correspondence?
But the, I don't think the planning enabling act actually states how it needs to be received. In some instances, things have to be done via resolution. I think maybe a mention in the minutes or. You know, at your discretion too, if you think it'd be best as a resolution as well too. But either either way, it's um, generally not something, I guess, if someone wanted to. Find out if those were being done, there would need to be some sort of record of it. My, um. I do plan on having this available in January of every year if possible. But as far as a resolution, it might be easier to find that information in future if it if it's ever needed. So I'll leave that kind of at your your discretion there too.
So really two avenues come to mind. First, the board could just accept and receive it as a communication.
Sure.
And and deal with that way, or we can go full blown resolution and have it approved that way.
Sure, sure. It will be, it will be on our planning commission agenda next week as well too, so there'll be multiple, multiple areas where it'll be mentioned. There'll be a brief mention probably in our minutes for that as well too, so. Normally in the past, most of the that I've done prior for the township are always done verbally, so. And maybe small mentions in those minutes as as those reports were given, so. Probably best however however you think or the or the board thinks the best way to proceed on that would be.
I don't recall getting receiving this last year, is this?
No, it's something, I've never been able to find one from previous years. I don't know if there's ever been one done from previous years, so. And as an independent contractor last year. Some of this is. As as the years go on, there'll be more information, more years to to go through and compare things, so. Then break things down as much as I did prior to those years, just based from a from a time perspective, so. Change the way that I'm issuing permits as well too, and and keeping track of those as well too. One of the things I used to do with the township as far as zoning permits go is. Always provide those to the township assessor too. I'm in the process of typing those up for the assessors now too, so they have a basis to go on as well too. One of the, some of the correspondence I get is from assessors on new structures that they find. Because sometimes they're permitted, sometimes they're not, so more of a check and balance there too. At the township level. Especially in West Branch Township with their own zoning, we would approve the zoning. We never know if they come and get building permits for stuff, so. The assessors get that information is from from equalization for those those building permits, so. That's a good way is to kind of check and counterbalance and making sure people report on to that process, so.
Churchill did amazing here.
Churchill. Lake Oglema, a lot of, a lot of pole structures, a lot of. And especially around Lake Oglema. They were, they were up normal. Foster Township.
Did well too.
Did very well as well too. Very surprised by Foster Township. Strange year for building permits, prices were high for building materials. So a lot more pole barns we saw this year than normally traditionally stick build garages. And they had to do with the price of lumber. I think we're gonna see that again this year as well too. But yeah, I was very surprised on how busy we were this year. With building prices the way they were.
I liked this information.
And it's good, it's nice to have two for previous years, just especially from the number of zoning permits. To kind of track where we're at. And for budget reasons as well too, good for comparison when compared county to county to county as well too, so. Maybe not so good for some other counties, but it's good for us, so I I do. A lot of planning commissions or most majority of them do do this, so I do see some planning commissions that have far less activity that we do that. Employ more people as well too, so.
I don't think we'd just be able to file this, receive it and file it. I don't, I don't think there needs to be any.
I'll place it under communications on the agenda. We'll see it that way.
Perfect, perfect.
You guys okay with that?
Ryan, there is one thing that. That I'd like to see in your report when you turn it again next year, you know, you break down the zoning permits by township and then. There's only violations, you just say how many land use, so just curious as to what townships, you know.
Were the majority of the violations?
Right, well, yeah, when you got like land use violations, five, you could maybe just break that down and say, you know. One in Foster and two in, you know, blah, blah, whatever it might be, you know, just to do the breakdown on. Where those complaints are coming from that you've investigated, just for curiosities sake of it. I I like to see the breakdown that you did on the, you know, the zoning stuff, but I'd like to see, you know.
Sure.
I might touch base with you just because I'm curious.
Yeah, yeah. The, as you can see on that page five there, that the majority of those are campers and or habitable structures. And in fact, that number is, is probably on the low side. We basically got to the point with with so many complaints that I was getting, a lot of people wouldn't.
Right, I understand, but I'm, and I can guess probably where the majority of those came from, but the other ones are the ones I'm curious about.
Two townships in particular on those, probably ninety seven percent of them from two tensions. A couple and a couple other townships.
So the violations are are documents, they're not verbal, these numbers here that we're looking at.
Correct, these are documented, these are signed complaints that I get from individuals. And that's how I like to proceed with them is with a signed complaint. A lot of times individuals don't like to do complaints because they don't want individuals to know who's complaining. Nine times out of ten, people know who it is anyways. And that is information that we don't give out, but unfortunately, if if we have to push something to court, the judge can ask for that information. So. So we have it if needed. But yeah, it's one of those things we don't, I don't broadcast it to when I come talk to you about a complaint, I'm not saying. Jenny David called me and said that, so. It also kind of takes a little bit of that factor out of it too and make sure I'm. Not picking on somebody or if someone might say I don't like somebody, maybe I I'm going.
Something to back it up.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Two other things on there too, I've got a couple other appointments, reappointments for both the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. All these appointments minus one, the planning commission. Which we have an application from an individual that's interested in in being on the planning commission. We do have a spot that will be available, it is available on the planning commission. I think that application is in your packet, it's from. From Rob Reed, he is the current supervisor there in in Hill Township. Real quickly with Rob, he's, he's been on the zoning board of appeals, he's been an alternate on the zoning board of appeals. So he's used, used to, very familiar with the ordinance, I work with him closely. As you can see, a lot of those permits, majority, I think them in in Mills Township were about tied for the lead with the number of permits, so. Rob is very good with that and he'd like to take one of our spots on the planning commission. Personally, I do work well with him and I know he's very knowledgeable.
And this, this term is for, how how long?
His term would be for.
Probably did, I'm looking at.
It would expire at the end of this year.
That says expiration.
Does it have Rob on the resolution?
Oh, right, so it only be December thirty one to twenty twenty two, so it'll only be a year?
Correct, so a lot of times what we do in these, if you're looking at those, you'll see two and twenty four, two and twenty two, one and twenty three. Like to stagger those. Part of the issue that we had is. We were to the point where a lot of these were building up all in one year, so. You kind of want to have them stacked, with seven members, you don't want five of them expiring expiring in one year. So we try to stagger them.
You've got that pesky statute too that requires you.
And the statute always requires us to do that as well too. So unfortunately, sometimes if there's resignations. People take over the 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 term of the previous person that they're replacing, sometimes with with new appointments. Through the years, we've had too many stacking up, so this hopefully gets the majority of them where we're not replacing any more than, you know, three a year.
You just said seven, there's only six listed.
Six listed, Rob would be.
He's at, he's at the bottom, he's already on there.
Is he?
I'm the third.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Commissioner, one commissioner sits on the board.
Yep.
Okay.
Which is appointed by you, so.
Yeah.
I have no control over the, the planning commission has no control over the, the, um, Ogleman County. Board Commissioners representative, so, which I think you guys do on a yearly basis.
Yep, we just reevaluated that.
Yep. So those five there, those are the term expirations and then two for the zoning board of appeals. Which, just for informational purposes, I I am down a member on the zoning board of appeals. I just received information yesterday from someone that is interested in applying for that position. They have not, I've spoken with them to have them fill out a application yet, so. You may, you may have another application in front of you in in the next month or so, but. We'd like to keep them whole. I'm also looking for alternates for both boards as well too. Occasionally, members can't make it, things come up. Currently, we have no actual alternates, so it's usually best if we're we're operating Edison, seven member board all the time. Especially for applicants for special use permits or even variances. You only have four people at a meeting and you need all four to pass something that it's not good for the applicant, so. So I am looking for some alternates and.
Both these members want to continue.
Correct.
Linda Miller and George, good child.
And they are both current and would like to continue.
Questions, Ryan? Commissioner Scott?
No.
We'll put that on for a resolution at the next meeting. Anything else?
If you guys have any problems or questions, please just give me a.
Thank you. All right, come on up, the touring policy update. Oh, my gosh. You got the four. Did we get a copy of the updated?
I was told you didn't have a copy, so I brought a copy, but I'm not sure why I'm here. You guys currently have questions?
Brought up at one of our prior meetings that it's been a year since we've, it's been a year?
Hasn't been a year since.
We talked about this and in the, in that time, we we met with the sheriff and other. Law enforcement agencies in the county, talked about the pole tow policy. And at that point, all that material was turned over to you and you are in effect at dispatch now. Taking care of the rotation, so they, there's a call for a tow, the. Officer in the scene will contact dispatch and say we need a tow and.
Everything's done over the radio now, everything. We don't get any calls in on the phone any longer. If they ask for a tow truck, our policy and dispatches, do they have a preference? If not, we're hitting the rotation button and that is what is being done. It's worked out extremely well. I've had no issues. We haven't had any issues, to my knowledge, nobody's brought any issues and I haven't seen any issues.
When we talked about this, but the policy and this came up in our conversation here. There were the requirements for the state licensure and making sure they're insured and all those requirements are met. Is that something you follow up on?
Absolutely, did that back and I want to say it was either September, October, I went through the list, the only one. That I never got a response from was Spence Tow and I took him off of our. Record rotation, can't remember what month it was, but it was sometime in the last six months. Took him completely out, not heard from him, not, so he must not be doing it any longer, to my knowledge.
How often do you get verification that their insurance is active or the licensing? I don't know what all they have to have, but.
They actually send me the information, we request it and it, there's expiration dates on them. Typically, it's the same time of year for all of them, so I'll, I have a folder for them that I go through and. Make sure everybody's, and then I ask if everybody, anybody wants to be put in a. Another jurisdiction, like we have different tow companies that want the whole county, somewhat just certain townships. So I make sure to ask and if any of that changes. Uh, which it didn't this year, so.
Now, did this go through, um, I, when we were discussing with Greg, he had a template of one that had went through the court proceedings. Is is that the one that we're utilizing?
That's that's the foundation of this one, there were, there was a lot of language in there that just wasn't applicable to Oglema County. But we shared all that, we discussed that in our, I think we had two meetings, total with all of that. And what dispatch did was took those elements and put them in their policy, so things like the rotation button that Jesse mentioned. Uh, was part of that and and that's, what's really nice about this, it's all automated, so when you. I've not done this, so you correct me if I'm not getting it. I've not done this, so correct me if I'm not getting it correctly, but if you literally push that button, it tells you who to dispatch.
Correct.
And it's documented then in the.
It timestamp it, it timestamps it right in our CAD system, who we've requested, if we pass it or we call and they, like for example, today there was a phone call to one and they said, no, we're not available. We can hit no, but it timestamps that, so we can show the timestamp with the phone call that we made and and connect the two, that there wasn't, you know, that they did say no to us. So there's never a skip on it unless the tow company itself says no. And then we'll go to the next rotation, we'll hit the button again and it will re-spin it to to the next person in in line.
The key is it's documented now.
Correct.
The system.
Everything is documented, everything, yes, I can do reports on it.
Now, how does somebody, because I I think, uh, what is it over there Hilltop? I read that they're getting a, uh, how does somebody get, uh, if they want to put into the rotation, uh, for a new towing?
All that goes through the state, the the state police post, I believe, and then it will, if and it may go through the sheriff's department, I'm not sure how it works. Typically, it's through the state police post, they get all their licenses through them, I believe through the um, commercial vehicle to make sure it's all licensed and then they will send it into us.
I'm just asking in case they ask us at at the township meeting, I just read that they're they're uh, maybe getting a towing service, so, okay. I would just want to know where to direct them in case they do ask.
The state of Michigan has all their answers on license, things like that, but.
No, I'm saying. Rotation.
Yeah, to put into the county, I believe, once they get approved through all the departments, they come to me with that they, because they just look over their stuff as well.
Yep, yep.
And then they'll bring it to me and say.
Okay, so you are the contact that they want to be put in, okay. Any questions, can we get a copy of that?
You can have this copy.
Oh, I'll, someone will make us copies, just so we have it.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner Van?
Isn't there a, can't you verify uh, all of your towing companies, Fred and Laura?
You can, absolutely, we can, and once, so once I get all that stuff, it's for some, they will let their insurance lapse and and typically we can find out, I mean, if we get word of that, we can, yes.
But if there's an expiration date, I mean, there should be some notification.
Correct, well, they'll get the notification, but I have a a folder that tells me when everybody is.
Right.
Expired, yeah, absolutely, but sometimes people, just like your vehicle insurance, it'll do a year long.
Yep.
But sometimes people won't pay it all the, and there'll be laps. So, you know, they'll lap, so they're not able to to do tow.
But I mean, like Tim is is putting in a notification when when terms are getting ready to expire, contracts are getting ready to expire, he's getting red flagged, so we have ample time to talk about it, to discuss it, so that way there is no lapse, so.
There's a certain time of year when most of these services have to um, update their licenses.
Now, I believe it just varies, um, most of them here in this county are six months, so usually every six months we check it, make sure.
Questions, Commissioner?
I I'm back to my former life, and I know that we used to get notifications from the MPSC if somebody's insurance did lapse, and I don't know if that's still going on or not, but I know that when when dispatch was running out of the sheriff's office, there was a monthly informational thing that came up from the MPSC that said this record service, their insurance has lapsed due to non-payment or whatever. So we would flag with that point in time and then notify them, say, hey, we got the notes from the MPSC, you're off the rotation until you know, we get proof that your liability insurance is back up to date or whatever, so I, again, I don't know if that's.
That that, yeah.
That doesn't happen anymore, but it used to be a, you know, I make thing where the MPSC would send us all that information on a monthly basis.
How many are there total that's being utilized in Oglema County? So that shouldn't be that hard to to manage, I wouldn't think. Commissioner Scott?
I have no.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was easy, right?
Thank you.
You too.
Item four B, internet access for Oglema Transit Airport and Industrial Park.
This is an item that's follow up from a public comment that we got from M thirty three access, and he was flagging issues at the transit airport in industrial park with the consistency of the internet service provided. Talked with our IT director today, um, we have thoughts and and how to proceed if this, there was going to be an upgrade. Um, what we're looking at is, you know, the potential of a fiber optic line as opposed to what the system is now with a and I don't know how the technology works, but there's an antenna on top of a water tower that beams down to these areas and they can access the internet that way, and that's what's become unreliable. Um, I think what M thirty three access was going after was potentially the use of ARPA money to put that fiber in the ground. Um, that while might be the optimum, um, does present some challenges for us in terms of how they ends up being used. If you use county funds to put that fiber into the ground, does it only go to the transit, the airport and the industrial park, or is this something then that anyone along that line gets access to? As I understand, by the airport, there's a subdivision in that area. Uh, and if then that subdivision is using that, then there are monthly fees. Um, you know, just how far does the county want to go to fund something like that? So uh, Tom and I talked about this briefly, I'm not really sure what M thirty three access has in store, I assume they were, we're going to be here today, but currently are not.
So maybe I can just kick in because Clackey Township has been actively working with M thirty three access. What M thirty three access is proposing to Clackey, and it was my understanding, sort of the same thing here, they're just going to put the fiber to the, on their own. Anybody that wants to hook into it has to pay the hookup fees, the only thing that the ARPA funds would pay for was for M thirty three access at their cost just to run the line. Not the taps in the individual businesses and or homes. And that's what Clackey Township was looking at, because, and I think Mike mentioned it when he was at the last meeting. They're not making money from that fiber that's laying in the ground, they're making the money, what you tap into that fiber running into your house or your business. So they're willing to take and run the infrastructure itself on the roadway at their cost. Then Mr. Homeowner, Mr. Business Owner, you pay to tap into the line from here to get it to your home or your business, and then you pay the monthly fee to M thirty three access for the service. That's my understanding of things.
Well, that's, that's what it sounded like, is they were going to run the infrastructure.
Right, they're just.
So if they run the infrastructure, where does the ARPA money come in? Because they said they weren't worried about running the infrastructure, they're only worried about the taps to.
That's.
Collect the funds.
They're looking, my understanding is they're looking at what their cost is to put that line in the ground.
Right.
Recoup that at their cost, that's where the ARPA monies will come in, and then they're making their money from running it to your home, so your business.
I I guess my question is, is it, it kind of caught us off guard, I, at least it caught me off off guard last week when the M thirty three access gentleman came. Are we struggling with internet connection with the transit in the airport and industrial park, are are they having issues?
I know transit has had issues periodically, there have been full days when they haven't had email because their their service was down. Um, I don't know about the airport or the industrial park.
Does that, I'm sorry, when their emails are are down, does that affect the uh, how the transit's being run as far as communication from stops?
Not directly for the buses, because they're communicating on a radio, uh, but what it comes down to, I think, are other things that transit does, um, you know, obviously Ray would need email, obviously to communicate um, outside, and they they've had workarounds, they haven't been slowed by this, but I can imagine it's probably pretty irritating.
Okay, I was just surprised by who brought it to us, I'm sorry.
For a second, it's Tom.
Oh, hi, Tom.
I just wanted to give you guys a little heads up, yes, there has been some problems out at transit, um, they do have a GPS system that works over the internet, they can't track the buses. Basically, what we've, we've done is, we have a workaround set up out there because of the service issues with M thirty three access, we have a Verizon hotspot out there that actually belongs to front of the court, and Ray's been operating off of that. I was hoping M thirty three access would be here tonight. Because I, there's something going on with the equipment, there's been problems in the industrial park, there's been problems at Waras' office where there's a wireless tower. And the M thirty three has equipment on the light tower out at the airport, they provide internet to the airport. So, and basically for free to have this wireless equipment up there. And the subdivisions and transit that are out there by the airport are all off of that tower. And and using the ARPA funds for this, one of my concerns is, so we pay money to run fiber down Airport Road, now they're no longer using our tower. Do we become a paying customer then too, so we pay to have the fiber ran out there? And then we become a paying customer on top of that. And that's where I'd really like to sit down with this fellow from M thirty three before there's any kind of commitment, you know, I'd want to see a plan, I want to see the costs. And I understand what they're doing in the other townships, and that's great, but at the same time, I think we're, we we kind of might be getting, I'll say, we're paying twice to get it all.
Are you guys able to have a meeting with with him, Tom? Tim, I was having trouble spinning that out, um, and the gentleman from M thirty three, I'm not sure of his name, I have his card.
Right, yeah.
Pardon me?
Mike.
Mike.
We could certainly do that to try to flush some of this out, and I also want to point out that I I would likely um, recommend you not use ARPA money to do this only because the federal government has set aside other money specifically for broadband and broadband access, and that that would I think be a more appropriate um, source to go to. I don't know directly how to access that, but I did send or sit through a webinar this morning with Senator Stabenow's office explaining not only this one, but a number of other uh, avenues for different infrastructure that frankly doesn't apply to us, but this one obviously caught my attention. So I would suggest if we're going to use the public money, so we use that particular allocation rather than the ARPA that's been allocated to the county.
Well, he hasn't talked to us about price at all, we have no clue where this fiber optic is coming from. If we got to pay for twenty miles of it to get to the airport, just so the airport can have it. And then next thing you know, Clackey doesn't have to pay anything, because the county's paying for it to go down Campbell Road. You know?
Well, I think that's why Mike and Tim and Tom need to sit down and work out more details, I mean, we could go on and on about this for.
Yeah, get some specifics, I mean.
For.
Wireless is one thing, that's what we got now, or there's out there, there's off these towers and stuff, there's wireless. But he's talking, not talking wireless, he's talking fiber op hardware. And where's that coming from, you know? Uh, if he wants to put up some receiving station on on our property someplace, I don't know. The airport is going to be pretty difficult, it can't be very high.
Can you put that on our next, you'll have adequate time to put that, uh, to get information, put that on our next committee, the whole, I think it, we need to continue discussion, I was just kind of surprised when that gentleman's the one that brought this to us versus the individuals that are having to deal with the problems.
Okay, we'll make it happen.
Good guys. Uh, item C, employee parking.
Had um, several several, I mean, like three or four complaints over the last couple of weeks about parking on B R South Lot. Uh, that's the lot that's right next to this building, the uh, first complaint that I heard and others followed were similar, is that we have county employees parking there on days when there's court and and public needs to have access to the building. Um, just in talking to others in the, in the organization. Uh, I understand the board already has passed a policy that says employees are to park in the other lots, not in that back lot. Unfortunately, unless somebody's out there in the lot policing that, it becomes, you know, problematic in terms of um, you know, who's parking where and and who uh, has the authority to go tell somebody they can't park there. Uh, if the policy isn't working, I did provide a copy of a county parking lot statute, if you can believe there's such a thing. Directly addressing parking lots owned by counties, uh, and this is one of those instances where the legislature and governor have granted counties authorities to pass an ordinance to literally direct who can park there and who cannot, and uh, ordinance itself ends up having a little more teeth in it, because we literally would issue a traffic ticket if somebody were parked there and they shouldn't be. And then you come in and pay the ticket, or you challenge it in court and so on. Um, I don't want to suggest that that lot needs to be um, completely uh, void of any county personnel, because there are personnel with sensitive positions in the county that do probably need to park there, uh, just for security and safety. But the other spaces in the lot can be left open for the general public, so. My purpose in bringing this here is I told each of those individuals that would bring this to the board, we could talk about it. I'm not necessarily recommending one way or another, but if we're serious about it, the ordinance is probably the way to go. Uh, and I don't want anybody to misread this, this does allow the county to charge a fee to park there, but you don't have to, and I'm not suggesting you do, um, but uh, it's.
Just want to know, is my name going to be painted on on the pavement, or am I going to have a sign up up in front where it park?
Is is the complaints coming from employees or from citizens?
From the public, from citizens.
So before you brought this to us, have have you sent out a a notice or a friendly reminder to employees?
I have not.
So before we have to go to this, I mean, they're they're all adults and.
One more chance.
Maybe there's reasoning behind this that that, uh, and and they can bring that to you confidentially?
Yeah, and there are uh, three that I can think of right now, very valid reasons to park there, uh, employees in this building, uh, I don't know who's parking there, honestly, I don't know who you know, among any of the employees who's parking there.
Is there not enough?
No, I think that the handicap spaces are are fine, we should move a couple of them back here as opposed to the front end of the building, right? Uh, I've not heard anybody complain that they didn't have one of those spaces to park in. It's usually the days when the building is very busy, if they're selecting a jury, for instance. Uh, there are a couple of days, I can remember this last fall, and virtually every lot was full, I got to park way back, you know, blocked away, which is fine, but that's unusual.
That was very unusual, because we had the, I think we had called like a hundred people, it was for the bank or whatever.
Right, so I mean, it doesn't happen very often.
It's just very odd, because this conversation just came up, what, a month ago, and we were talking about parking, parking with the building and and it sounded like we had adequate, adequate parking. So is this just because it's winter months and it's cold, is this?
That's, it came out, the concerns were voiced on very cold days, yes.
I would recommend just putting a friendly reminder out and and coming to you with with any information that they obviously probably may not want to share with others.
Karen can testify that this has been an ongoing issue for.
I think it's.
Decades.
In the past couple months, I'd say, having like the past month, month and a half. Anybody and everybody that can park close is parking close.
I mean, what's your, why, you think it's the weather related, is there something else going on?
I think they started doing it and got used to it and nobody said anything.
So let's just send out a friendly reminder and see if we still.
And I'm really happy with my spot.
Are you guys okay with that, are you?
I'm fine with it.
I don't think.
Been an ongoing thing.
For parking.
Pretty on, so.
Nice to know you can, right?
Uh, next, we have a quarterly budget adjustments.
Okay, I um, did put some things on the iPad late this afternoon, and also brought the hard copy out for you. Uh, and this is going to be probably the most tedious part of the meeting, so just bear with me as we walk through this. Um, the quarterly, the idea behind doing quarterly budget adjustments is that we keep up with the finances of the county, we don't leave everything to September fifteenth and then suddenly realize that we we may be, uh, have a larger problem than we realized. Going into this first quarter, we don't typically see need for a lot of adjustments, but we did do a couple of things when we adopted the budget that we do need pay attention to, and the first two, it'll take the easy ones right out of the chute. First one is the Veterans Fund, and this is not one that's in front of you, but remember with the Veterans Fund, we determined uh, through the resolution for the Appropriations Act that we would not allocate or would not assess that millage this year, that we would instead use the fund balance, so three hundred thousand plus that was in that Veterans Fund, their annual budget's only one oh seven eight thirty for this year, so what you'll see in the resolution is that we show the use of the fund balance uh, on the revenue side, and that's a pretty easy one, so the rest of the expenses are fine where they are. We just make that change, the other one was MSU extension, same thing, we reduced the millage revenue. Uh, I think we cut it in half, um, but the revenue would be adjusted to show the sixty seven thousand five hundred coming in, and then the balance would come from their fund balance, so again, we would just see that use of fund balance line, uh, and that would be eighty two thousand two hundred. Uh, that fund balance went up significantly, um, un-audited surplus that showed for twenty one was forty one thousand five thirty five, that nearly doubled their fund balance by itself. So using the fund balance for the extension, uh, for the, uh. Take care of that reduced millage is definitely appropriate. You might recall when we first talked about this, that we were thinking about moving some monies over from the Building Inspections Fund. And Veterans Fund and Planning and Zoning to help, uh, offset some of the costs for the receptionists. But with that level of fund balance or surplus that came in last year, that's not necessary. So it's all contained within that one fund, and we'll just simply show that, um, correction to the amended budget. Now, the ones that are, um, particular. Complexity, I'll start with the, turn to your handout on the first page, uh, is the Sheriff's. General Fund Sheriff's Office. And this one, it doesn't have a whole lot of complexity to it, in fact, you won't see this. Show up in the quarterly adjustments because everything we're going to do here is a non-personnel item. And it's a line item movement within this activity, so the bottom line won't change. But a couple of things of note, first of all, you'll see on, uh. Uh, about one, two, three, or fifth stripe down, if you will, the overtime for the Sheriff's Office. Is already at, um, eighty-two percent with roughly thirty-three percent of the year. Uh, behind us, it'll be at thirty-three percent at the end of this month. Um, so that's pretty significant, uh, twelve thousand three thirty twenty-six. Not over yet, doesn't need to be adjusted yet, but one that, um, and I spoke to the sheriff about this earlier and the other sheriff, one that. Not only needs to be monitored, but I've gotten commitments from both that the three of us are going to meet, we're going to put together a, a plan. That the board can see for addressing this issue and the overtime in the, uh. Corrections and the overtime in, uh, Road Patrol, which I'll talk more about in a second. Uh, but no action is needed on this one at this point, down under health insurance. You've got a few more stripes, uh, the health insurance is at one hundred six point eighty-seven percent. How could that be? Well, we looked at this and, you know, clearly there's an issue with the BSNA entry. Because this, these four employees who are in the, uh, Sheriff's Office Budget. Uh, should only have at this stage about twenty thousand in, uh, health insurance, but I think has happened is that. Uh, rather than, uh, showing the health insurance to the. School Resource Officer and the Road Patrol Grant Officer, they got dumped in here, and I wouldn't be surprised if there was a couple of others. We did make some adjustments, but where the various officers were charged off to which activity. And I think that's what happens, that's just going to be an entry, a correction that we'll do administratively and that number will come down. But there's no way seventy-two thousand worth of health insurance for four people in four months, that that just isn't possible. Telephone, uh, this is one of those, um, what I would call, uh, a non-controllable expense. You're at the mercy of what the phone company charges, but but the Sheriff's Office is at seventy-six percent. Uh, again, with a third of the year gone, now that's, um, not a huge amount, as you can see here, but. One that needs to be monitored and we need to figure out what we're going to do, it's likely that one will end up being over. Down in the fleet policy, that's toward the bottom. We had budgeted fifty-one hundred for the insurance for the fleet in the Sheriff's Office, the bill came in at fifty-seven fifty-seven ninety-six. So that one is, uh, over, but that's luckily, you're not going to see any additional insurance, this is for the annual, uh, policy. So that number will be, uh, at that point for the rest of the year, so what do we do with that? Well, down toward the bottom, you'll see under Sheriff's Vehicles, uh, this proposal, but have that reduced by something less than a thousand dollars. To cover that insurance, so that's how we'll move those monies internally, that's something that the department can do because it doesn't involve personnel. Uh, and as long as the bottom line isn't changed. I wanted to bring that to you because we do need to keep on top of that overtime and we do need to bring a plan forward. About how that's going to be addressed, uh, for the rest of the year. Next one, uh, next page is the Corrections. And some of the same, um, issues, uh, we'll start off though with the part-time wages. That's the third stripe down, uh, we had budgeted thirty-three thousand, thirty-six thousand seven hundred is already shown as being expended. So what we're going to need to do there, first of all, is find out how that happened with the part-time. Uh, recall that we added two full-time positions to Corrections this year. And the idea was, um, that that we wouldn't need so much part-time and we certainly wouldn't need as much overtime. But there is something that happened here, but before I get to that, let's jump down to these other two, uh, wage items, the next one is the Cook Wages. And you can see that the expenditure year-to-date lists at zero. But we do know that we've had cooks working there, so again, this is just a BSNA correction, we're going to have to find out where those. Wages were charged to and get them to the right line item, uh, and that may take care of, uh, it may be what the part-time is. So we'll find that out and get that corrected. And then, of course, the overtime, uh, the overtime right now, uh, for Corrections. Is at forty-one thousand two ninety-six with a budget of thirty-five thousand, so clearly an issue here, now what happened? Well, one thing I know happened, um, and I think we've had two cycles of this since the fiscal year started. It's when our Corrections Officers get COVID. And when that happens, um, they're obviously off, uh, on sick time, but we're having to backfill those shifts to make sure. The floor is covered and make sure that, uh, Corrections Facility is operated safely. So we do have. That special circumstance and that that's, has been a pretty large expense. I've, uh, had the opportunity to go through to see why, where those expenses were in these rotations. The good news is, we still have CARES Grant money that, uh, we'll get from the state. And one of the categories of that was for COVID overtime at the jail. And right now we're looking at about thirty thousand dollars of grant money that we'll have to help backfill some of that. That being said. This level of use of overtime is not sustainable, I think I have concurrence of both the sheriff and the undersheriff about that. And again, we are going to get together and talk about how we curtail that, some pretty good dialogue with, uh. Uh, both the sheriff and undersheriff, uh, earlier this afternoon on ideas on how to make that happen. We want to get that down for the record so that you're assured, as we continue to work through the year, that we're not going to have a budget problem. And next item down is the inmate prescription, uh, this is a, a line item that we did not have or that we did not budget for. That, uh, does have a line now that has, uh, uh, some cost to it. Bear with me as I work through this to see if I can find it. And is.
Fifty-seven point three percent.
Uh, we've spent two thousand five hundred thirty-one on that line. Um, I've, um, recommended an adjustment to, to make that a three thousand dollar, um, item in the budget. Uh, I think that's just again, in a matter of accounting, this is something that was probably accounted for in, uh, like the other jail medical line. Uh, further down that now has just been opened up to a new line, that's all well and good, that's, that's great for budgeting and then the department can track that better. Uh, but we'll make sure that, uh, wherever that offset is that that happens. And as we had with the Sheriff's Office, uh, the fleet policy came in higher than what was budgeted. Uh, again, the good news is that is like the end of the, uh, cost for the fleet policy, so that's, that number will be stable. So what's happened here is that I've, uh, moved, uh, various other line items so that this budget still balances. But because some of these lines include those personnel items, it will take board action to make this amendment. Uh, possible, so what you'll see in the resolution for the quarterly budget adjustments, you'll see the spreadsheet. With these numbers on the right column, so that we maintain our balance budget moving forward. But also with a commitment from the department that we work through this to address that overtime issue. And that part-time issue will clean that up. And your confidence, uh, that you understand that we're on top of the budget and we're not going to have a problem, uh, moving down the line. Again, this one isn't as major of a concern, knowing that we have the additional state grant money coming in to offset some of that. Last one concerns the Road Patrol Budget. And right off the bat, on the revenue side, you recall, we did reduce the allocation from one mil down to, I think it was point three five. So that adjusts the, uh, uh, Road Patrol Millage Dollar, that revenue that comes in. An interesting thing happened with the insurance refund, when we get to the fleet line item here, um, I'll talk about those at the same time. Because that ends up being a wash, it does, um, have new revenues, but the cost for that insurance did go up considerably here. And then finally, that transfer in from fund balance, this is the unaudited, uh, fund balance from twenty-one that we knew we were going to carry over. It's less than what we had originally projected, um, but there's also a reason for that, that, um, the auditors are, um. Somewhat responsible for, and I'll talk about that in a second too. And each of the wage lines that you see here, the wages, the fringes, the social security, et cetera. I was able to go through and, um. Do I think a more, um, shall we say surgical, look at what those expenses are. Uh, we have, uh, I believe eight deputies assigned to this fund. Two of those deputies didn't come into the fund until December twentieth, after they completed their training at Delta and then were. Full M Cole certified, December twentieth was their first date, so able to back out some expense there. So anything that we have budgeted from October one through December twentieth is now taken off from the expense side. There's still two positions open, uh, in this, um, uh, fund. Uh, those positions will not be filled by the end of this month, so. The new wage line, uh, line item shows four months less of expenses for wages and benefits for those positions too. So the adjustment you see, for instance, on wages that, um. Drops it from the budgeted four twenty-one one down to, uh, three hundred seventy-two thousand. Now, if those positions are not filled, uh, in February, and the likelihood of them being filled on February one is not high. But they could be filled at some point in February, we'll make an adjustment for the next quarter. Uh, to make sure that those expenses are backed out as well, so those are all, you know, good positive things. The adopted budget numbers, though, are still very important, it'll be very useful to us when we start to do the twenty-three budget. Because that represents what the full staffing costs would look like. So that'll give us a good running start at twenty-three when we're, uh, ready to start doing that. Now, overtime here is also somewhat problematic, um, looking down. We had ten thousand dollars budgeted, we've spent eighteen thousand six forty, so there needs to be some adjustment there. Um, and that's all been done again within the fund to make sure that our bottom line, uh, remains within what the revenues will allow. Uh, not quite sure why that is as high as it is, uh, it would be unfair of me to, you know, corner the sheriff this afternoon and say, why is this? Without the opportunity to go back and dissect that, so part of our conversation. Uh, will center on why that is as high as it is and what we can do to curtail it, so that we don't have a problem, uh, moving forward. Number of other expenses in here that we need to take a look at, one of those is the gas, oil, grease line, that's the fuel. Um, that particular line, you can see we have budgeted, uh, twenty thousand, we're at forty-three percent. So it's not alarmingly high at this stage, but it is higher than what, um, we should be at this stage, it should be about ten percent less. So we'll take a look at that and determine what we can do. Uniforms. Let's see. All right, eighty percent, um. If we end up, um, you know, the good fortune to have our two space or two positions filled. Uh, is the remaining less than two thousand dollars going to be enough to outfit them, if not, we're going to need to find the funds within. Fund to, to make that happen. Uh, did reduce the vehicle, uh, repair. Uh, but we do need to plan for that too, uh, reduce the, the expense here to help offset some of those other, uh, increases that we've seen. So that's going to need some additional, uh, conversation. I want to take you down to the third line from the bottom under Training. We budgeted twenty thousand for Training, but our, uh, financial system right now is telling us we've already spent eighteen thousand six ninety-two. And I said, how could that possibly be? Well, we haven't spent eighteen six ninety-two, we spent about two thousand in this fiscal year. But during the audit, our auditors made, um, uh, general, uh, journal entry. Their, uh, view is because our two officers didn't graduate in fiscal year twenty-one. But graduated in fiscal year twenty-two, that the expense needs to be recorded in twenty-two. This is the opposite of our thinking because we paid the bill in twenty-one to Delta. But the auditors want to show that in twenty-two, so we'll have to accommodate that, uh, and show it in twenty-two. Now, the good news is, that means it didn't get taken out of last year's funds, so we didn't lose, you know, sixteen thousand dollars anywhere. It just kind of came over in a different way than what we had planned. So that's an easy fix, but that's, it's not anything to be alarmed about, it isn't anything anybody did, we didn't send two people off that we didn't know about. Uh, it's just last year's, um, allocation. Now, because the, the overtime and some of the other, um, items that I've talked about earlier are as high as they are. Uh, we've already, uh, allocated, uh, twenty-two thousand eight forty-two for a vehicle. And rather than, um, you know, put ourselves on the line, uh, we just decided at this point, that's what we'll. Uh, end that line after this year, we won't purchase another vehicle out of this fund. Balance of those dollars, we'll, we go back to take care of some of those overtime overages, uh, that we mentioned. And as I said, the overtime, uh, trend right now is not sustainable. So asking the sheriff and the undersheriff to meet with me, we will come up with a plan to address that. Again, some good ideas have already been, uh, uh, shared about how to do this, uh, very good ideas that I think will address the issue. But we need to absolutely stay on top of it to make sure there's no problem at the end of the year. So this one will also appear in the resolution, um, or, um, quarterly adjustment that you'll see next week. I, I'll attach this, the resolution itself won't have this detail, so I'll attach it and refer to it in the resolution so that you see it. And in the meantime, uh, have the commitment from the sheriff and the undersheriff, we'll have a standing appointment, uh, committee of the whole. As we work through our plans so that you can see how this is going to be addressed and have the confidence moving forward, we're not going to have a budget problem by the end of the year.
Can we, can we hold off on passing this resolution? Um, you guys are going to have adequate time to, to meet before the next committee of the whole, that way you can further discuss the plan. Is, is, is this a time-sensitive matter?
Well. Just my personal preference is that we, we deal with this four times a year, so once a quarter. And deal with what we know right now, get the budget amended to deal with what we know. And then work through the next quarter, so it'll be like the first April committee, the whole meeting, well, you'll see this topic come up again. And as we've worked through this, we make the adjustments, make them final at that meeting. Um, but there's nothing wrong if the board prefer to wait for a couple of weeks to do this, there's nothing wrong with doing that.
Well, I mean, for a couple of weeks, but you guys either have two weeks to, to, uh, meet and discuss and come up with a plan. And and I mean, we don't need to know the, the fine details, but some general information as far as. The plan and what you found with the software, that where the glitches were.
Yeah, I'm sure that's just a data entry issue on, on those glitches, but we can certainly do that, again, there's no, uh. No rule that says you have to do this even quarterly, I mean, a lot of counties will just wait till the end of the year and try to deal with it all then. I just assume not let everything pile up.
Right.
That's all.
It's nice to know where you stand, they know where they stand now and they can come up with a plan.
But waiting a couple of weeks, there's no problem doing that, if that's, if that's the board's preference.
How much money are we getting from that, uh, the Michigan, Michigan grant you said, correct?
Yeah, it's a CARES Grant, uh. This particular one was geared to, uh, correctional facilities and it's in the neighborhood, um. Let me say the low forty thousand range, there was seventeen thousand, I know we committed to new tether materials. And, um, roughly thirty thousand, you know, whatever was left from that can go to offset overtime. Uh, there were other things that we'd listed in there that would be eligible if we wanted to get sanitizers and things like this. But that particular grant was geared toward correction facilities and particularly overtime due to COVID. And we had three cycles work through that, I've got the documentation for it. Our overtime exceeds what the grant allows, so there's going to be no problem being reimbursed for it. So that's why for that particular, uh, activity, I'm, I'm very comfortable, we'll, we'll be fine. But we still need to get that overtime plan in place because next year that grant won't be there. We'll need to make sure that we've got this.
How long before we get that money?
I have to put the paperwork into Lansing and then they turn it around, so it's really on me at this point, just to get the, the forms completed. And and down to, uh, down to the state.
First of all, we're going to get an updated general, uh, general fund budget report.
That's what you would see with the resolution itself, a couple of things that you'll see with the general fund part are the. Two or three times we've gone to the contingency and reallocated those funds, so you'll see that actually show up. There were no other adjustments that are going to be made in the general fund side this quarter. Not unusual, you'll see that happen more as we progress, second, third quarter in particular. Where we see trends and if a department sees some expenditure is on. where we see trends and if a department sees some expenditure is on way higher than what they expected, that's where you'll see some adjustments needed in there, but this works the other way as well. So there will be areas, lines in various departments that are not being spent. And this is an opportunity to reallocate some of those funds if they're not going to be spent, rather than just let it languish through the end of the year. So you will see that, it will be somewhat detailed, you'll see every line of revenue and then you'll see every department underneath that. So you'll see, be able to track the change that we propose.
Well, I'm I'm not just talking with the changes, I'm talking like we were getting it for um August, September and October, we haven't gotten a budget report since.
So you'll see that in the same format. Now, put it together, so you'll see what the adopted budget is, you'll see where we are year to date with the percentages spent. And then in this column, you won't see this column necessarily because this is one with recommended adjustments. If there aren't any recommended adjustments, you know, no point in seeing that, but you'll see exactly this, this one, I actually took it through January twentieth, so because I needed to know where we were as of today, particularly with the overtime. But for the quarterly, you'll see that filled out and you'll see simple way to look at that, anything that's over twenty-five percent in the first quarter should get your attention. Some cases that understood. Exactly, so some places, like if you have an annual contract, it might be at a hundred percent in the first quarter, but you know, you're not going to see any more expense there. So, you know, those things will trigger, but you know, on the general line itself, if it's above twenty-five, maybe this one is zero. And I, or if it's at zero, particularly if we get to the third quarter, it should be seventy-five percent and only one percent is spent, why is that? Oh, we're not doing that anymore, well, let's get that out of there then and reallocate it.
And the other thing is, is uh, you know, obviously we don't have a lot of data yet because it just started with this program, but having some more analytical data on there would be nice, like um, just as you already explained. This is what this line item is and we don't expect it to go any higher for the rest of the year. So if we had another line on there explaining that to us.
Um, there is. Um, and what's really cool, I I got to run this uh today, they've got this column called uh the balance as of the date. In this case, it was today, it has two categories, normal and abnormal, and the abnormal in parentheses. But what this is, a the system is looking at where we were at this point last year and comparing it to where we are this year. And so there you'll get to see not only what percentage have we spent, but where were we last year? Oh, we spent ten thousand more last year, we're actually on a pretty good track this year. Or, gosh, we spent way more this year than we did last year, why is that? So not only will you see, you know, that twenty-five percent may not tell you anything, but if you see a big divergence between the two years, it might be worth asking a question, why is this? And likely your department will be able to explain what happened.
And then um, with regard to the overtime, um, I don't think the COVID was the only culprit there. Um, we had two officers going to college as well.
We did, and we had, we had a cooldown, um, so yeah, there are, there's some unusual things that happened.
Yeah, yeah. Couple officers that had surgery and so, yeah, you had some other.
Uh, Brad, just uh, you can ask the clerk or the treasurer's office, they'll print you up to date budget right away. And it can come in just a matter of a couple of minutes. I've had it, I've, I've had him print a couple for me.
Oh, okay.
So you can just ask that, yeah. Would this be a sign A? And the treasurer's office is now caught up with this re- reconciliations and all that stuff, right?
No, that is not, that is not a true statement.
Oh, okay, but but but.
The professionals still have not figured it out.
Okay, but you, you told me that we can come now with this to date budget.
We can bring to a budget anytime, for any activity anytime.
But I guess, why would we, why would we go to, to the clerk or to the treasurer, why would we not come?
Well, we can.
The administrator.
They're faster. Yeah, well, I just went to, I, I was able to do those today, um, so, but they, they're faster, they, they know what, exactly which button.
Why recommending us go to them, I'm, I'm.
I'm not necessarily, I don't want you to bother them, but it's, if you need it quickly, they're probably the better. Well, it's because it'll take me ten minutes.
Tracy, print it out, my box, I'll pick it up, sure.
I told her, I told her that, I said, whenever you get a chance to, and five minutes later, here it is, Craig, and it was the whole budget, it was there. It's, it's a key, it's, it's like one key or, or, you know, look up a file and.
And we're literally in a program.
Right, so I guess it's my question, should we request they be put on our iPads and updated? Um, how often would you guys, so that way we can look at, at this at home and we can come quarterly with questions or come to you directly for further explanation on things or to department heads or how often would you guys like these updated on your iPads?
I wouldn't mind seeing one month like myself.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Monthly works for me, I don't want to kill trees at home, so, and I work better off piece of paper looking at than I do staring at the screen. Much better.
Yeah, you can take it, like, you, you know, if you get, take it at home, you can print just what you want.
Exactly.
You know, you know, and have to print.
I don't want to waste their time with my dumb questions, so.
No, it's not.
So who is no dumb question? Tracy, I have one a month?
I mean, we could probably do that with claims once a month, just drop it in. Okay, it, it's going to look more like this, though, it won't be the but, you know, this is fine, this will give you exactly what you need and whatever columns you want to see. Um, you can just be told about.
Well, what column I'd like to see going forward. What column I'd like to see going forward is adjustments made, like if we, I, I'm, I'm fine with making these adjustments now and then hearing the plan for the next nine months. But uh, in three months from now, I want to see the adjustment made in the first quarter. In the nine months, I want to see the adjustment made in the second quarters because I got questions right now, you're, you're, you're looking at a recommended adjustment up to twenty thousand on this deputy's overtime. You're already at eighteen six forty.
Mm-hmm.
I can surely see by the trends that this county has been doing for years that we're going to exceed that again. I don't want to see an exercise or a culture built around how to move money around to pay for whatever I want. I want a culture because we started this year deficit. We are in a deficit budget right now. We're spending more than a hundred percent of the money we did get.
Is that a true statement?
Depends on what you define as money taken in.
If well, money, we project to take it.
We, we moved some money from ARPA, we've moved some money from revolving fund to balance this budget.
We, we started here with a balanced budget.
We started the year with the balance budget and remember we're weaning ourselves from the tax revolving fund. They have three more years to get that done and within that time, the ARPA will be done too. So by that point, we better be.
So year five, we want to make sure that we're not back to deficit. Right, year five, we want to have a fund balance. Remember, we still do not have a fund balance.
Correct.
We still rank eighty-three out of eighty-three counties that on a fund balance. Um, Ross Common County just passed their budget, they're on a calendar year. They have a budget of ten, ten million dollars.
Hmm.
Because they have mille件s for other things, take care of other things, but their general budget is that. They have a fifteen percent fund balance. That's one point five million dollars that is set aside for a fund balance. We have zero, we have not had a fund balance here for years. The culture we need isn't to, to move money from here to there to spend these things, not to take unspent money from one department and pay for another department. It's to come out at the end with money. That's called a fund balance, that's not called money we should have spent.
Drawing your attention back to a few months ago, we passed uh a resolution. Couple of um new policies to address exactly that, a reserves policy. And when the audit is finished and we have the final numbers in and we better well have shown a surplus for last year. But um, I'll be coming back to you, reminding you of that policy and recommending that certain dollars be reserved in the fund balance and that you move some monies into the actual reserve fund that gets locked away and not spent unless there's a two-thirds vote to do so. Uh, and then we also had a capital improvement component to that too. But I'll be bringing all that after the audit is finished so that we know where specifically everything stands. And we can say with confidence, we have this much to put away in our reserve. And again, for your plan, possibly longer to get us to those levels. I think we wanted fifteen percent in the reserve fund and another fifteen in uh fund balance. We may not get there because that's thirty percent, but at least we're on our way and we have a target that we're, we're aiming to make sure that those reserves are there. So if everything goes well, goes as planned, and you know darn well it won't, but if it does, we'll be right where we.
Well, yeah.
Well, when you say by changes, uh, Commissioner Scott, you mean like you just had brought up the vehicle? Um, and and that's not utilizing that, if I'm reading this correctly and by what you said, not utilizing that sixty thousand dollars, instead putting it somewhere else to cover, is that what you mean, so we can see what changes are made, is that what you're placing?
Uh, this last column here is recommended adjustments. If we go with those adjustments, I want to see those adjustments in the column over here. In three months, it says, three months ago, we made those adjustments. Because I can see a couple of these lines here, every quarter, we're going to make an adjustment for that line.
Right.
And we're going to originally start out at ten thousand dollars budget at in, in October one. And then September thirtieth next year, gee whiz, we spent sixty thousand dollars on this ten thousand dollar budget item. We didn't learn a thing. All we did is turn around and spend more money now. And if the bottom line down, down, the bottom line down here didn't change, that means we moved everything around inside. What culture are we building?
You're looking for more information.
You know, no, what, what it is, is we got, we're, we're moving things around. We're relying on hopefully a grant, hopefully this, hopefully that ARP is, ARP is just a I see ARP is great for getting money coming in, but I see it as a, is a a delay, a delay on, on, you know, on, on a deficit. It's just delays us having a deficit budget in year five. If we don't, if we don't change the way we do business.
Well, hopefully this, the software will help with that significantly.
Well, I mean, the plans we've been putting in place, but we're not the ones spending money, okay? We got departments, lots of departments that are spending money and we want to make sure that everybody's on the same. We're all singing as a choir.
So I guess that was my other question, this is being done for all departments, not, this is just sheriffs and corrections we're looking at.
Right, these are the, the areas that need our attention.
Okay, that's right.
The others, again, this is first quarter, you don't usually have a whole lot of anything going on, just it's the first quarter, right?
Oh, yeah, if you look at most of the departments, we're not going to see any red flags at all.
So to get to Commissioner Scott's point on what we show here, you will always see this originally adopted budget column so that you always have that for reference, but you will see another column beginning in the second quarter that says amended budget. So if there are changes, you'll see that, and I think maybe to uh make it easier to see where there were changes rather than show, you know, a number in every one of those, we'll just fill in the lines where there was a change, so you can see that, you don't have to hunt for it. Uh, like I was doing earlier, so you'll see that. So then we get to the third quarter, you'll see the original adopted and then you'll see the amended through the third quarter.
Well, but, but I'd like to see amended first quarter, amended second quarter.
Okay, we can do that, but the idea here in this tool is that so next time, when it, next time, when it comes to dealing with the twenty-three budget, you've got some track record and say, look, we really under budgeted this and we were pretty consistent about it, how about we fix that now? And budget accordingly, or we didn't spend any money here, uh, and we didn't over three uh quarters, so it's pretty safe to say we didn't need to budget that much.
Well, I think that's what Craig's trying to say, if you budgeted that the next year, you don't have to make any changes.
Right.
And that's what he doesn't want to see, he doesn't want to see any changes, whatever is budgeted. Well, you live with.
Oh, I want to, I, I, I don't, budget is, I don't, it is, it's.
It's supposed to be adjusted, my budget is adjusted every week.
You got to explain, you got, you need explanation why, I mean, I worked within budgets all the time. And, and I had to explain why things were, you know, did a big snowstorm hit and then, you know, whatever, you know, cost of fuel goes up. It's, it's a, it, you know, just like we're talking about insurance here, that's how a lot of our hands with insurance went up.
Well, I mean, with, with generalized line items, um, the whole point is if we don't need to spend it, we shouldn't spend it.
Right, that's the culture.
We have the money, doesn't mean we go spend it.
Right, don't spend it because you don't think you're going to get it next year, I, I'm tired of hearing that, you know?
Other specialized items where, um, like we talked about CPL earlier, um, you can only spend it on so many things.
Right.
But I, I just want to make sure that we're being frugal with how we spend that money, we're, we're being responsible with it.
Absolutely.
Get the best value we can get.
Absolutely.
I personally would, would prefer to put this on the next uh committee of the whole and, and just you provide us just a, a general plan as far as uh these adjustments. Um, I think that will help for the next quarter, knowing that this is going to be followed and we're just looking for a general plan. Um, do you guys agree or do you want this on for a resolution for next week?
I would agree with you, manager.
Really?
Yes, really.
Thought I'd ask again.
Should I put that in the minutes for historical purposes?
Sure.
This is money spent already, this, this is money spent, we have to adjust our budget to it to show that this money's been spent. This isn't money that's going to be spent. What we're looking at here in these amounts is, if it's gone over budget already, it's just gone over budget, it's gone, we can't, that money's spent. So we, we need to adjust the budget to show that.
Absolutely, agreed, but just a general plan verbalized to us going forward. Or no, we're not running into bigger problems three months from now, so halfway.
Right, I, I agree, I agree with that, yes, but.
But these figures aren't going to change.
We know, this is spent money.
We know this is going to be done.
Yeah, we, we need to, we need to take care of it and we should take it care of it in the window of the, the, the quarter.
Yeah.
The, the, the month after the quarter.
Which gives us adequate time.
Well, we're in, we're in the last half of the month after the quarter, the quarter was October, November, December.
Also.
January is the.
Only one more meeting is what you're saying.
What we do at next meeting, we, we don't need to go into, we don't need to go to end of February to make a budget adjustment. We need to go into February to hear the plan, uh, how we're not going to do this again.
Is that best practice to pass a, a resolution within thirty days of coming out of that quarter?
No, ideally, sure, but again, there's no vast rule that says you have to do it that.
Let's say you have.
The fact that we're talking about it right now and at this level of detail in January.
Is good.
I think gets us to that best practice. And if we say, okay, we need a little bit more information to be confident we're doing the right thing, it waits one more cycle, that's all well and good. We're talking about it now, we need a few more weeks, okay. But we see that, that finish line coming, we'll get there and it won't be just verbal, we will write up what that plan is. Uh, what are we going to do to uh pull back on the overtime? And so you'll see that in writing, maybe even uh make reference in the resolution to it.
Then if we do want to wait, then what I'd like to say is freeze this column that's spent money at as of one twenty so that if we go into February or March before we make the next vote, that I can see that is what was spent up to that point. And then if we're going to uh March twentieth, two months from now, I'd like to see another column says up to the twentieth of March, you know? I want something to compare, I want that historical.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that, I don't think these numbers are going to change neither, but I, I don't see the, I don't see the rush personally. Again, I, I would like a, a plan in, uh, discussed with us in writing, uh, before we pass these numbers, I think that that is good practice.
Absolutely, it is, absolute.
Commissioner, fine.
Well, that's why I said these numbers aren't going to change, so, um, yeah, we can, we can wait, that's, that's fine.
Commissioner Becker?
I'm fine with waiting.
So we'll put it in the committee of the whole and then plan on the first of February? And there's nothing wrong with that?
Nothing wrong with that, continued discussion.
Um, would you guys like it on the iPad? Yes, please, like the first claims of the month is fine. Second week of the month? How you, when she downloads the claims, just download that too.
I'm thinking that would be the easiest because it's like all right there.
Same time.
Be done, in fact, we could do it, you know, we do claims every other week. We could do this every other week, if you want to, just see that as sort of a standing document that's in there, maybe you open it, maybe you don't, but it's there.
Yeah.
You get a question from somebody, you can just pull live, live results.
And it'll be in a separate folder, correct?
Yeah, and just be separate documents.
So it used to be.
And it won't necessarily be on the agenda, but the document will be there, we'll label it, so it's right with claims. So you'll be in the same spot every time.
Okay. Is that it? Administrative secretary update.
First, thank you for indulging me with that, that's the kind of stuff I geek out on. The um, we'll call it the personnel policy committee met on Monday, we interviewed five candidates.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yes, one of those weeks. Um, did have a candidate that, um, I I think, uh, speaking for the entire committee that we all agreed was, um. You know, a clear choice in terms of the skill set brought to the table and the experience. Uh, you did see the tentative offer letter, this was conditional offer letter that was sent out yesterday. Conditional for a few reasons, one, we we have requirements like the employee physical, it has to be uh addressed first, but. As was explained to the candidate, the full board will vote on this, um, and that will be the official uh offer at that point. So I don't know how much more detail you want beyond what you've seen. Uh, we've not yet contacted any of the candidates to say that we've selected anybody pending the vote of the board. Uh, so I would suggest that if there were any concerns that we air them now, because I would like to inform those other candidates tomorrow, uh, of the intent.
I never received that email, I know you and I talked today and and you discussed, um, the choice with me, but I I never received that, I still didn't, so is there any? Can you send that to this, uh, my commissioner email?
Yes. Trying to think, I could almost do it sitting here, but uh, I think I can. Can you, I I don't know how to do it on the iPad, but I would.
It never came through my other email, so I don't know, and I think we even tried again, I I never received it, so. Is the resolution, copy of the resolution in there, is is it the?
The offer letter is in there along with the uh background materials submitted by the candidate. Which was already in that one folder, but.
What's your number?
Five.
Five?
So we need this, any questions? Commissioner Vance?
Committee was good, I'm good.
Commissioner Nebecker?
I still am in disagreement with how we handled this. I I would have liked to at least been able to uh witness what happened, I thought we had discussed this at the last meeting, that we would be able to do that. I didn't see any meeting posted on our website, so I didn't think that that was a available for me to be at. I don't know if it needed to be on Zoom, but it could have at least been recorded, so we could uh all get to view all their. Interviews, so we can make an informed choice when we go to vote on it. I mean, all we're really doing is voting on what the committee decided.
So I guess, um, I I guess before, Commissioner Serbuk. Commissioner Scott?
Well, this is, this is just a clear committee action, this is why we have committees, that's why. That's, um. If you wanted to be on the personnel committee when we talked the last meeting, could ask, do you want to be on the personnel?
I I I don't necessarily agree with you on that, um, the committee doesn't mean that they have to make the decision.
That makes a recommendation to the board, we're making a recommendation to the board.
I guess I'm asking for more information.
Well.
Before I can vote on this. I mean, when we go to a security meeting, um, and they wanna make a purchase in the building. We we obviously go over it in depth before we.
And then you come to the meeting and ask me to vote on?
Yeah.
I wasn't privy to the meeting, I didn't go to the meeting.
We didn't, but we didn't make a choice before we even brought the board either.
Well, if you look at three different items, if you, if you bid, uh, if you. Surveillance camera, and you looked at two, two or three different models, you're gonna come up with one model that you're gonna recommend. And you're gonna.
We would still show you all three choices.
Well, then, if you want to look at all the resumes of the people.
Well, I'm not seeing all of them on here.
I I understand some of his perspective because of how we hired Tim, and maybe it's just that I'm not understanding this individual's role. Um, so when I at wanna have communication or I have questions, do I come to you, or now do I go to this individual?
You have a choice.
So because when we hired Tim.
Right.
I believe you and Brad were on that committee, if if I'm not mistaken, and then we all sat in on. What do we interview, three, you guys took it to three people, I think? And then we all participated in the interview and was able to see the candidate, listen to the candidate, ask questions. So I guess if if this individual was just assigned to Tim, I wouldn't have an issue with how this is has happened. But since we're gonna be utilizing, um, this individual, and again, not that I necessarily have an issue with how it happened, I just understand Brad's perspective on this.
Okay, I I get, I get what he's saying too, but at the same time, um. We need an IT director, and all of us ask the IT director questions all the time. But it was a personnel committee that did the interviews of of the IT candidates. And we we made a recommendation to the board to hire an IT director. We, uh, we did the same, that was Bruce and I. Bruce and I did equalization director, these are non-elected positions, but the art department ads. We 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 advertised, we got a a number of them, we interviewed them. We did all those processes, and then we came up with a recommendation.
But those individuals are are, we're not working directly with them, they have their own departments that they're running. So I don't feel like, again, that's the same analogy you used last time, I don't feel like that's comparing apples to apples. Like when when they're bringing in a new support staff into my office, um, they start with the the overall manager first. And then if if they do well in their interview, which is the manager of the district, then they bring that individual to my office, and I participate. In the interview, so again, I just understand his perspective. Um, I mean, you know, maybe there can be a a resolution, if if you have questions, if there's things that you wanna do, do. To be comfortable with this.
Saying the person isn't qualified and isn't the best person, I'm just saying, I would have liked to have been able to witness it. And know personally that we picked the best person.
That's going to work best with you?
With best for the county. The whole board, cuz this is a whole board type of thing, and even with the other things, um. I I understand we have a personal committee for for digging into this stuff, but that doesn't necessarily have to be the 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 committee that actually hires. These people, um, and I'm not debating what we've done in the past, I'm just debating, is it right?
Baiting, it's just a.
Discussion.
Personnel committee and part of the. And personnel committee.
So is there a um policy and procedure on how a committee is uh supposed to operate, and what they're able to do? I mean, is it written in stone that you have to do it that way?
Is it, is it, where was this posted at?
Explain to me.
I thought so, it definitely was posted on our official posting board out here for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, I thought that was when I'd sent Tom a series of them, I don't, I didn't go back to look, I don't know.
And I know it was discussed with the attorney, but whether that needed to be an open meeting or not.
And it did.
So we were all on notice that, you know. Be an open meeting.
We only had two commissioners there.
Then you could have come.
I know, but we only had two commissioners there.
Yes, but it was posted open, it was posted.
Well, you have to have three, cuz it's an open meeting, right?
No, 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 you can have posted meeting, you can have an open meeting with one commissioner, if that's all that showed up.
It doesn't, you don't have to restrict it.
We we don't have to have a forum to have the.
But we made a decision.
I just didn't get communication, because a again, there's five of us sitting here, and again, I don't have a problem with how this happened, but I did interpret, I'm I'm gonna admit. I interpreted things different than the three of you guys, so the communication shouldn't have been so, um. All of us should not have sat here and interpreted interpreted all of this so differently. So I don't know where the barrier or where the breakdown was, but obviously there was one.
And I kind of thought we hashed that out previously, when that's when Brad first brought that up, I thought that we had all discussed that and. We decided to just continue the the way we'd started, you know?
Except that the attorney said it had to be posted, and it had to be an open meeting, so we, it was posted on the on the board. That is the accepted posting spot, I mean, we found that out back a couple of years ago, when we got involved in the. The first steps of the administrator search, remember that, you know, it was pointed out to us that it had to be on that bulletin board.
I would have, uh, I guess, maybe expected it to be on the website too, or at least a phone call saying, yes, this was posted. You can come to the meeting.
Well.
I mean, I don't walk down here every day and uh check the board.
No, yeah, yeah, I know you don't, and I don't either, um, I'll say this, um. I had discussions with Mark and told him some of the parameters that was preferred to me. I I in doing this, and then started to sit down and talk about. Uh, just before the interviews, I kind of said to Tim, I says, well, you know, and. It's really your director for your, and and you're gonna work with this person much more than I am. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna take take your your selection as a weight, a little heavier weight, you know, personally, for for my personal decision. And he said, no, you know, if, because at first he's, at first he 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 suggested that he do the interview. And I suggested the personnel committee be involved. And he he told me that he thought about it and thought that was the best way to go. This position should outlast Tim's position. This position should be just a a career position. No, Tim has a term, Tim has a term.
Right.
And 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 I'm gonna bring this up a little bit later on another subject, but. Like all of us, we have terms, but the people we hire in the building here, they don't have terms. There is no ending date, when we hire a secretary or you, we don't say, oh, you're you're gonna work here, the one clerk, one of one of. One of, when when Brett hires somebody.
Oh, I tell them, you're here for twenty years.
Isn't there a ninety day probationary period?
Yeah, there is, yes, yes, there's, you don't do your job, you're out of a job, but but there is no ending date. You and I have an ending date. Okay, uh, Tim has a contract with us, he has an ending date.
So is this individual not?
This is not.
I haven't seen the contract again, this individual doesn't have an expiration, doesn't have.
This would be a just a full-time employee, just general.
Non-union?
Non-union, at will, yeah.
Did you get that? You already approved the job description.
Any other? Any other questions?
No.
Do you want to do it different? No, now's the time, we can do something different if you want.
No, but uh.
Oh, that's it, I got it.
I mean, you've already, uh, told this person they got the job, right?
It was made very clear that the offer was contingent upon the board.
And we have not approved it, so it is not a given job.
Well, that just, to me, seems kind of unprofessional to do it like that, but. But you you you're saying that we haven't told the other applicants that they haven't got the job?
We haven't indicated who is been selected to them.
You don't think that, uh. That information's not gonna get back to them before we actually tell them, since we're on Zoom right now?
That's why we're having the conversation, um, in fact, I had a conversation earlier today about that, and I'm not comfortable. Telling anybody anything until I know what the board wants to do.
Well, I mean, you told that this person that they were a tentative hire, you could also tell those other people that tentatively. We have not selected you, you would even have to tell them who it is, just letting them know that as of right now, they're not selected.
I could do that, my preference is to wait to hear the direction of the board.
So when you, this resolution is passed next, or or let me rephrase that, when this resolution is brought to the board next week, is there, it's. Is this gonna be the first time that that all candidates are hearing this name out loud, or are you planning on, how are you planning on handling this?
I'm planning on contacting them tomorrow, if there's a clear direction of what the board wants to do today.
Okay.
So this is gonna be on the agenda next week, the others will be notified. So I'll do respect, it's my way of not getting ahead of you.
Well, I mean, it doesn't really change the circumstance though, because until next week, it's not a done deal.
That's right.
But you're still telling them.
I'm still telling them because I'm preparing a resolution that will be on your iPads by Monday.
And we've had this further discussion about it.
I just wish we'd have done this as a board with this particular position. It's just my opinion, I'm done.
I I don't disagree with with parts of that, by any means, I I think the communication was, or or how it was interpreted was definitely, uh, misleading, but. I talked to you about the candidate, you and I had some some conversation, I looked over the resume, I looked over some things, so. Yes, and you said the interview went very, very well, so. I have to step out, right, can you resume the meeting?
Sure.
I think the meeting that we we talked about, the personnel committee, maybe at that point, just go ahead and make the motion. That the whole board interviewed.
I mean, just to finalize, I thought we talked about it, you guys were gonna twiddle it down to the top three or five, and then we would interview them from there. Just like we did.
That is how I understood that too, I really truly did, you guys are gonna take thirty or forty candidates with that criteria, that checklist, take it down to four. Then four or five were then going to come to all of us, that is a hundred percent how I interpreted as well.
Okay, I agree to, I agree to disagree.
It's done, I mean, it's done, so.
We can do that, we're at a point right now, we can do that if you want.
Oh, I I I don't, I don't know, I I think, uh, no, I I don't feel like that's necessary.
I feel very assured that that the outcome is gonna come the same, if you sat in, what I saw. Oh, and good luck.
Thank you.
Have fun, yes, don't freeze.
What, can I talk to you for a second?
Don't catch a cold.
Back to this, um.
So you want a resolution on there? I would like to see it, yes.
Yes, okay. All right, moving on to, uh, four F, COVID nineteen preparedness and response plan.
Yes, you all know, uh, it wasn't last week, the week before, whenever the Supreme Court, um, determined that the. Vaccine or testing mandate, um, is not constitutional, so you now have the. Recommended, um, changes to the COVID plan to get us up to date. Now, there are some things that are in this plan when it was created about, uh, everyone, um. Being required to be, to have the health screening when they came through the doors, and what we still monitor for that. One of the changes here is that the board can mandate it if you want to, it's it's, but it no longer is absolute. We had mandates for masking in here that have been relaxed, uh, so. This is the most current version, consistent with CDC requirements and where we stand with all of our state and federal requirements. The one area I thought we would get pushed back on was the worker classification categories, that's the essential versus non-essential. But it does seem that the qualifying statement that has been proposed, that essential, non-essential pertains only for the need for onsite. Uh, presence to do the job, that seemed to, um, lay to rest the concern about whether I'm essential or not essential. So it's just a matter of defining the terms, this has been brought to the department heads and distributed, there's been no additional feedback. And I would suggest that you would want a resolution to adopt these revisions.
I personally haven't even got a chance to look at them, cuz I didn't see any of this stuff on here until yesterday. I looked over it a little bit, but there were some some concerns I had, I'd like to go over with you. Mark, did you have anything?
I I went over it, um, as much details I could yesterday, and then I looked at it again today, um. I don't have any concerns that jumped out at me.
I I looked it over, um, I'm I'm kind of with Mark, I didn't really see anything that that, uh. Really changed that much, um, that's. I I think it's good.
All right, so, um. Put it on for next week, and. If we really make any changes to it, we can do it at that point in time. If we really make any changes to it, we can do it at that point in time.
Do you have some specific concerns, Brad, that you wanted, or do you just wanna talk offline to Tim?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to talk with him, uh, on it. There are just some things that I, I don't know if they're necessary to even have in there at this point.
But. And the, and the reason I ask is because if you get some specific concerns, I'm sure we'd all like to hear them, you know, just because, you know. It may be something that I overlooked, you know, that I, you could say, oh, you know, just particularly, and I could go, oh, yeah, wow. I did miss that, you know, I just kind of breezed over or whatever.
One of the things that's, you know, one reason why we hired Tim is, uh, if I have a concern or you have a concern, you can bring it to Tim.
Exactly.
He can filter that stuff out to the board, um, without us violating any open meetings acts. And then we can prepare for the meeting and be way more knowledgeable, instead of just seeing something a day ahead of time and make.
Right. I just wonder if there's something to jump up. That's all, I.
Well, I'll get with Tim and, um, you can filter it out after that.
Did this not show up on your iPad?
I, I just got it like Tuesday. Tuesday is the first time that I saw it.
Okay.
Actually, no, it was Wednesday. That is the first time I saw it.
Yesterday.
It was right after, well, no, I didn't see it on Tuesday night when you sent out the email. Was it four forty-six or something like that? About the other, um, topic, but. The, um, actual update on the iPad, I didn't see until Wednesday.
They posted this on Saturday, and that's why I asked that, and, um.
The posting was there, but for the regular meeting, but no packet. Not until.
Something's going on here. I'll have to get, um, this, there was a lot of stuff this time, so I made sure to get it out as quick as I could, so. I didn't make it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that happens again to me. I'll give you a call.
Jenny mentioned earlier about emails.
Even when I sent her an email, it wasn't. I thought maybe it might have a, um, she might have a size, um. On the, on a per email, like some, sometimes it's five megabytes, some, you know.
Yeah, I've sent some long ones lately, so.
Anyway, um, Craig, do you have anything, uh, any questions on the COVID nineteen plan?
No, no, I talked a little bit about it with Tim in, in his office. I'm fine.
All right. Did you go over this with the department heads yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, we had a meeting a week ago, Monday, so that would have been what, the tenth, and it was distributed ahead of that, so.
All right, next, uh, life insurance proposals.
Yeah, we in the bargaining with the deputies and the command, and I think maybe with the corrections unit. When they switched from Mesa, the insurance they have with the Teamsters actually had a, a life insurance component to that, that was, uh, in. Embedded, I guess, in, in that product, and I got with, um. Uh, Beebold, who was able to go out and get us a couple of quotes for the same coverage that they previously received. And our intention was, and you'll see that actually called out in the contract itself, is that we would match the insurance. Of that Teamsters plan, which was part of what got them to get over to the Mesa to begin with. So this is the final component to that, that we finally got the quotes in, uh, Beebold is recommending Unum. Uh, that proposal, which does most closely fit what, uh, the Teamster plan had. So this is for officers, they would have a fifty thousand dollar life insurance policy. An accidental death and dismemberment component, and then there was a dependent life, uh, as part of that program, just very small amounts that. Uh, would cover the spouse and, uh, any dependents in the household, and you see the total on the. Prior right of their quote, uh, tailing at about twenty-two thousand dollars to cover everybody, uh, that would be split up. Part of it will go to the, um, road patrol fund, part of it will go to the sheriff's office, and part of it will go to the corrections. Uh, already built into their budgets, so it's just a matter of, uh, yeah, accepting the proposal, and I would suggest that we go with the deep old recommendation.
Tim, I'm looking at this and it shows that's to ensure a hundred people.
Well, this, they break this off into tiers, so this is the lowest tier is up to a hundred lives. And I think the next one is either two hundred or two fifty, and it goes all the way up, so if we had, uh, like fifteen hundred lives. The per unit cost would be lower because of the volume, so this is like the threshold that gets you into the program.
So we're insuring. Three, forty people at a cost that we pay exactly for a hundred people as well as.
Right, so, you know.
So theoretically, if we could, for the same amount of money, we could have this insurance plan for a hundred county employees.
We could, um, let's make sure we understand this, so the number that you see there. Uh, the four point eight billion, what they do when they make their assessment and, and their premium is charge us. A certain amount per thousand dollars of wages, so for instance, on the life, it costs us thirty-one cents per thousand dollars. We have roughly four point eight million in wages that are covered by this.
Okay.
So that's where we get to the monthly premium being what it is, so if we add people, that volume number is gonna increase, so the. You know, the premium price per unit will still be thirty-one cents per thousand, but we're adding more people, so it'll be, you know, higher than the.
All right.
Here.
So that basically. That hundred number is an up to.
Right.
Right.
Yeah. Then the rate probably changes.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it, uh, we did promise them that we would. Match that component.
And for those.
For that line of work.
And we say it's more than that. With the Mesa plan, so. Yeah, just the savings alone pays for it.
Ron, any questions? All right, so we'll put that on for next week. All right, four H, metal ex, medical examiner agreement.
I don't know if you have anything more to add to this. We just said that we would continue the discussion following the. Last meeting where we had the two representatives from the state police in. I did receive an email from Ogama EMS. Uh, and their, their comments were simply that they have had no issues at all with the MEIs on scene. Now, recall that their job is much different than what. The detectives are. I mean, if they've got a crime, then they've got other follow-up they have to do. EMS on the scene. Um, the, the opinion was that they show up, they're professional, they're on time. They, they're satisfied from the EMS component that they're getting what they need from the contract. So that's the only new information, other than, uh, reading, uh, just today, Saginaw County thinks have taken a pretty ugly turn. Uh, there are lawsuits now flying both ways, uh, and one of them multimillion dollar suit, uh. You know, filed by the company, so it's, um, you know, like I said, gotten pretty ugly there.
What is our obligation?
Our contract says, and the, the words and the numbers are different, but, um, I'll. Error on the side of the long term, that, uh, the county can terminate the contract for any reason with ninety days' notice. And if we do that, I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna need the ninety days to set the RFP out and get the process for a replacement in anyway, so that's a good thing for us. Uh, but that's, it's pretty black and white, and when we wrote the contract, definitely had the county's, uh, interest in mind when they did it.
Well, like MSP said too, that, you know, if, if the next company that you find is in Grand Rapids, they don't wanna have to be running to. Grand Rapids either.
No.
You know, to. Expense for that is, you know, can get crazy stupid.
Well, maybe we should just investigate. Other companies within our region. Uh, just as a shopping trip, I mean.
I, I think.
We're not.
Reach out and.
See what up surrounding counties, counties close to see who they're utilizing and.
How far they're coming, what.
I've had correspondence with other law enforcement since we heard from the state police, and some of those stories I heard were pretty concerning. Um, I don't know if the sheriff's department's got anything that they wanna talk about, but, uh. I, I was definitely very concerned with what I heard. And I can see why. There's probably, um, some litigation going on down in Saginaw County. Would you like, you guys have anything or like to give your opinion?
No, not at this point. I mean, we can, we could discuss certain things.
City police, they have any issues with, do they, do they?
I don't know, I haven't heard anything from Chief Walters as far as direct type complaints or issues, so.
It wouldn't probably be a bad idea to probe Walter a little bit. And then keep your eye on this Saginaw County thing.
From a distance.
From a distance, no.
All right, so you gotta reach out and, uh. All right, next on the agenda. ARPA update.
And the only update I have is the, the list, and there were a couple of other things that were added, um. Ten and Oshir was in this morning, reminded me, he had, uh, also suggested, uh. Uh, new cameras in the correctional facility, apparently when the. Camera system that's in place was put together, it was intended to be added to at a future date, and there's just some areas within the facility that he'd like to see added. Talked with Commissioner Vaughn, I guess we had talked, it was a.
Yeah.
Message, um, that Mike Bowers was in here talking about, and it wasn't here, he was at the security committee meeting, talking about. Uh, security cameras at the sheriff's office and using FEMA money, I think it is, to purchase that. But since then, Commissioner Vaughn was at a, a meeting and learned that a siren, uh, in, which, with our township. Is not functional, and the thought was that that might be a better use of the FEMA money rather than, uh. Uh, security cameras at the sheriff's office, and we add that to our ARPA list, so I've added that here, and we can talk about that, uh. At any point, but I don't wanna lose the project, so it's added here now. Uh, you know, for my two cents, I totally agree for the FEMA money, that siren definitely would be, uh, uh, you know. From a safety standpoint, and something that probably is more urgently needed than anything, that, that FEMA money be directed that way. Um, the sheriff's, uh, security cameras, I know Tom has been working with the sheriff on that, I think they've got pretty much everything together they need. It's not an outlandish. Price by any means, uh, so it's certainly something that our, but dollars could handle without hampering us, uh, moving forward. I don't even know where you are with the project.
I think he's waiting on the cameras. Everything else is in except for.
Yes.
I don't worry, where's that with that?
I'm not even sure that maybe that's. Yeah, I don't know if Tom's still on there or not, but if that's already something that's been budgeted, then that, maybe this is a moot conversation, but. Anyway, I didn't wanna lose the project. It's on the list, so whatever turns out to be the case, it's there.
I know Clacken Township's, uh. Request to the clerk's office last week. Did you guys get that, Brooke?
For what?
ARPA funds.
I didn't, I didn't see it. Nobody said anything to me.
Cause I know Debbie said that she sent it, and I asked her to send it, she sent it to me as well. I talked to her cause I had the meeting last night.
Did you get it?
It was addressed, it was addressed to the county clerk's office. I saw the.
No, if I would have got it, I probably would have forwarded on to him, but I don't.
It was sent through the mail.
I didn't, it might not be here.
I think it was sent through the mail anyway, cause I asked her who she sent it to, and she said she sent it to clerk's office, but, um. I'll get you the information, cause it's different from what the. Was in the request anyway. It's sixty, I can tell you what it is, and what they wanna do is they wanna, um, they're getting. Sixty-two thousand dollars, I'm saying. Yeah, they're getting sixty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars, and being as you can. Use that as lost revenue now, so they don't hopefully need to pay the prevailing wage. They could do all county maintained roads in Clacking Township. If they had an additional. Change sixty-seven thousand. So they're requesting sixty-seven thousand dollars. For.
So I'll be on the lookout for that.
For what, paving?
No, for high speed, for M thirty-three Xs to run.
Oh.
The supply, well, quote, supply lines, fiber optic, and all county maintained roads in Clacking Township.
Oh.
And again, if that. Separate little pot for wirelesses, that's the perfect place for it, but they're, they submitted a request. At this point, so I, I wasn't worried that that was out there, I wasn't worried enough to them last night, so. I will.
Yeah, I, um.
And I still haven't got a price on a generator for.
Yeah.
Commission on aging either. I need to take and work on that. She hasn't gotten any, who she asked for a quote, never did send her anything, so. I'm gonna take and try and find some generator companies that may. Be willing to give them a call. I don't know who's. Installed the nine-one-one generator, and I, I don't remember who did the GLA, and those companies are still in business or not, but try and find some places until we at least quote. The cost of a generator, and I know we kinda talked about that for the county building too, so maybe we can, you know, get them to. Utilize those. If you, you want me to get with Chris on that maybe, or Tim, or did you wanna?
Well, somebody more qualified than me, cause I don't know what, what would need.
Well, that's what you need them to come in and take a look at the physical structure and look at, you know. What kind of electricity you've got coming, and I, and I don't remember. They, uh. What they, how they determined what we needed for the jail when we built the jail, but I mean, they went and they looked at the blueprints at that time, cause we, obviously the building wasn't constructed, so they couldn't. You know, but they saw what was there and said, you need a XKW generator for, you know, what you got coming in to service the building, so.
Yeah, that's definitely, uh. A concern.
Yeah, I'll shoot, uh, an email out to the townships, cause I wanna do this with the ORB and give them one last chance.
Right.
But also give them the links to the other, uh, sources of revenue for that. Um, and, um, webinar I was on today gave us a whole bunch of them, so it's just a matter of. Figuring that out, and I thought you were gonna go with roads, uh, that they wanted to do road improvements.
No, no.
Send that one out anyway, cause there's a whole nother pot for road improvements, so they may as well know what that is too, if they have. Projects along that line, so I'll get that information out to them and they can explore, uh, because I think they're more likely to succeed there than they are with us.
Right.
There was a lot more money.
Right.
In that.
And I told them, obviously, we were looking at. The county itself. I said, we got, I kinda told them both, you know, the issues with the annex building. You know, I talked to them about the generator for this building and some upgrades that we need. I talked about the sheriff's office and how that building needs to be bulldozed down. A new one put up, you know, things like that. I said, so we've got a lot, I said, we have a lot of, you know, internal things that we need to do. Quote for ourselves before we can look at expanding monies outside the. County umbrella.
You, you said a awful there. I think we need to have a plan of how we're going to take care of everything we need to take care of within the county. Obviously with our budget, the way it is, um.
Before we're looking at distributed.
Yeah.
Outside.
Hopefully, we can, we will have some money left over to do some things with some of the townships and stuff, but. We, we definitely got some, uh, big dollar projects to, to work on.
I agree totally. And, uh, so have you crafted any type of, uh, priority waiting system?
Just every time I get into that, something new comes up.
Okay.
It's my attention, but yeah, I have a framework of ongoing.
All right.
And hope to have it today, but it's.
Because, yeah, I think we need to. It's here. We know we can use it.
Yeah.
Might as well start using it. We don't have to blow it all up once. I mean, I've sat in a couple of township meetings, and they overspent the thing in ten minutes.
Yeah.
You know, but no, no, because, you know. I won't take it right out to the, to the max we can, but.
Along the line with the generator discussion, some of these projects that we've listed in, in here, we have no idea what they're gonna cost, so I think there needs to be a little bit of homework there.
Absolutely.
Particularly by the departments that proposed it, to just give us a rough idea where that's gonna come in, and, you know, clearly. Once we do get the point of starting to bid some of this out, I mean, it could be more, so, uh, but yeah, at least we'll have some priorities to work from.
Uh, on that line, are we just about moved into our new building yet?
I think everything's there. Um, they did the appliances, I think, yesterday.
The lights are turned on.
Or, uh, the lights are on, and we have a key. You can actually get in.
Key.
Heat is working, right? You were in there, weren't you, Karen?
I went and toured it on Friday with the judge. It's beautiful. Furniture's not here yet, obviously.
Yeah.
Um, appliances weren't there when I was there Friday.
Okay.
We have them, but they weren't in the. Think they were working on trim work yet.
Yeah.
Some trim work to finish up.
Appliances are in there. They're not where they belong yet, pending that. You know, wrapping up the trim and things like that. But of course I asked Michael, did the appliances fit? And he said they better because.
You better believe that they better.
Alright, next on the list, ORV update.
I'm just going to put out one last call to the townships for any feedback, but we've. From your, your township so far, there's not a lot of changes being proposed. But we aren't in a rush, but we'd like to get, probably get this wrapped up before spring. So one last call for.
Well, Foster Township, I went to their meeting. I told you, they just suddenly with the way it is. Their township board says. Dawn to dusk.
And I talked to Goodher and I talked to the city of Rose City and it's like they never received anything from you.
And like I said, it was so long ago, they probably just don't remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just said I'd mention it.
I do have something I want to bring up, but I wasn't, I, I would, I didn't intend to put it on the agenda. Difference, but I phoned out, I got a text. And I'll just verify with you. Brad, do you, you contribute to the 401K?
Uh, not here, but.
Not here? Okay, Tracy thought you didn't and then she texts means that you did. You don't. Okay, alright, well then I don't have anything to. Bring up. I was going to bring up that, that. Well, what I was going to bring up was that it takes, it takes five plus years, I think, to be a hundred percent vested. Not for, not for our age.
Not for retirees.
Not for retirees and not for, and at, at my age, I, I am a hundred percent, but younger than that. They are not, but if you are not contributing, then it's a moot point. I was going to say. Because of the redistricting. If you were, or Jenny was, and she's not. That I would, I, I'd want a resolution to change it to elect officials get a hundred percent vested because. The jobs do have terms. And ending dates. And in your case with Jenny and even with Ron. If all, if hypothetically, if all three of you run next year, somebody's not going to get in. You know, so, so I was going to make, propose a resolution to. Bring a hundred percent vested.
And it takes more than a resolution. You have to contact person, have a change of plan document.
Yeah, well, I talked to Mers about it and everything. But it's, it's a moot point because. Everybody else is okay. I mean, by the time she completes her term, she'll all agree to the best.
Thanks for the confidence booster.
No, it's just that the time you spent already before you got elected and then you're elected term, you will be a hundred percent.
Talking about when I heard my name in the office. Gotcha.
Right.
I know I'm right.
That worked out when I worked for the sheriff's department. I didn't have enough, I didn't have enough time, but because of my age, I got a hundred percent.
Right, right. When I called, I told my agent, they said, you're a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. But doesn't matter. And I was only going to do it for elected officials, you know. Be, because we have a term.
If this is a moot point and it's not on the agenda, does it need to be in the minutes?
It was said publicly. You can say Craig commented about.
Craig Scott?
Craig Scott. You go commissioner.
In your minutes.
Anything you want to do there.
Say who was here and how the votes went. There were no votes.
Well, we don't vote on it.
Right.
I don't care. But I think it's something.
Historical purposes, I will.
Yes, that's minimal.
So last chance for public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on Zoom?
Yes, I got a public comment. My name is Jake. I'm West Branch Township on behalf of DNN Garage. What I've learned as I've sat in these meetings heavily over the last two years is one thing. Ogama County stands behind their local companies. They almost always, if they can, shop local, support local, upfitting the new sheriff's office vehicles. We shop local for quotes. That was specifically pointed out by the sheriff himself. Plowing and salting, all locally owned Ogama County owned companies taking care of the Ogama County lots. Asphalt, the corner of thirty and Houghton Avenue, as well as many other locations. Always locally owned companies, so long as the county is footing the bill, supporting the county, am I right? Yet, here we are a year and a half after my first appearance at a commissioners meeting, still talking about towing. A year and a half later, we have two local companies, one openly stated they are done and another without a valid C-VET. This after supporting how many companies from Aranet County? One of which permanently closed. Another biting its time running out until it renting, until it permanently cements itself. On a police rotation like it has in every other surrounding county around them. And never paying a dime in commercial tax or buying commercial land in any of those counties. Just come in. Sit at your local tractor supply and demand the majority of police initiated toes. It is of no secret at the point this, the point. The impact this has made in the community. I don't have to tell you that. You know, especially if you followed Hilltop Auto's record progress and why. The point at hand should be when you choose those local companies to service the county plowing, laying asphalt. Buying desks, et cetera, or in the case of towing, non-local companies, of course. Does someone check whether they are legal or even maintaining their legality? I have learned in the last hour or so, they do not. I was initially going to ask if Jesse could tell us what the C-VET requirements are. However, I now know she does not. I will inform you all specifically on how this works and to be frank, I'm not sure which six companies Jesse is referring to. But given everything else he said, six is extremely subjective. And coming from DNN, we were never asked of a single thing. First and foremost, LARA is used as a Michigan business entity search. You can search any business here. Their filing stands.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You, you have a couple more, couple more seconds.
I have forty-five seconds. Their entity type, those things, Michigan.gov forward slash i cars is used to check C-VET authority. I recommend you all go there and search around your beloved Ogama County zip codes to find out who is active and who is not. Towing companies have between October one and December one every year to renew their C-VET authority. The rest of December is a provided gray area. As of January one, they are put in revoke status. After a year in revoke status, they are inactive. That being said, checking credentials in September slash October, as she indicated, is useless. Furthermore, how are we ensuring requests, quote unquote, requests is so frequently heard over the radio? I have records of requests that the person had no idea their vehicle was empowered in Aranet County against C-Hilltop Auto. As baffling as that is, to allow companies to operate in certain townships, Ogama didn't let another company of their own simply dictate their own hours. But we can dictate townships. This is all just smoke though. Yes, sir.
You're at three minutes now. If you'd like.
Thank you all.
Okay.
Yep, thank you all.
Alright, any other public comment? Alright, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.